Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And this time I would like to call and order the regularly scheduled meeting for the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on the date of, what's today, February 21st. Let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Seal.
Here.
Commissioner Perrow.
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Cassinelli and McCarville.
Thank you, sir. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes or additions. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, same. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have multiple items on the consent agenda. Are there any removals from the consent agenda or changes? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, same. Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to give the audience, and bear with me, as my very able chair is sitting next to me sick, so she's happy to be here but can't talk. And thank you for letting us delay you guys a little bit. We had me with the full city council a little bit before this, and we were just taking a break in between. So I appreciate your letting us take a little break in between. At this time, we'll open each item individually and start with a staff report in regards to how the application adheres to our comprehensive plan and uniform development code with staff recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for the approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant is finished, we will open the public testimony. There's a signup sheet. Actually, it's a tablet now, so if you would like to testify, please make sure you sign up for the application on the tablets in the back. And we will go down the list and make sure everybody has a chance to testify. Any person who wants to testify will come forward and have three minutes in which to do so. If you're speaking in behalf of a larger group or an HOA, and there's a show of hands on who they will be speaking for, they will be given 10 minutes to speak on that behalf of the HOA. After all testimony has been heard by the applicant, will have an option to come forward and close the testimony and have 10 minutes to do so in that, to close the discussion. After that, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have a chance to discuss and hopefully make a recommendation or a decision on the application. So at this time, we will turn to the staff and open the public hearing for, and I'm looking for, H-2019-0007, the public hearing for Harvest Church Preschool. And we'll start with the staff report. Stephanie, it's all you.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair and members of the commission. The first project before you this evening is for a conditional use permit. The site consists of 0.83 acres of land. It's zoned OT, Old Town, and is located at 8:31 North Main Street. To the north is East Pine Avenue and commercial or in retail space, zoned Old Town. To the south is retail and restaurant, zoned Old Town, and to the east is North Main Street and retail and commercial space, zoned Old Town. And to the west are residential properties, which are also zoned Old Town. In 2018, the site received a CCC approval for a group daycare, which allows for up to 12 children. The applicant is requesting a CUP to operate a daycare center for up to 60 children in the existing church building. The daycare center is proposed to operate with three staggered class times. The first class time starts at 8:30, the second at 11:00, and the third at 3:30. Classes are set to finish at 6:00 PM. The staggered class start times should help to alleviate site congestion and allow for more parking opportunities. However, staff does recommend the applicant provide further information regarding the enrollment for each of those staggered class times to further assess whether parking and circulation needs are adequate. There are 46 existing parking sites on site, which exceed UDC standards for Old Town. However, the UDC does allow the commission to require more restrictive standards in analyzing a conditional use. If the commission determines the dirt lot to the south should be used as an extra parking or as an extra space for parking, so the site here, the applicant shall improve the lot in accord with UDC standards, and cross-access shall be provided to adjacent properties. If approved, the applicant shall amend the existing CCC to establish the new daycare center use. And if commission does require the improvements for parking, they'll also need to submit a design review application to be reviewed by staff. No written testimony was received on this project. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the report and will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? Please state your name and your address for the record, sir. Ma'am?
Ben Butterworth. Address is 3128 South Gannell Avenue. That's Meridian, Idaho.
Joanne Richter. 2301 Lower Bluff Road, Emmett, Idaho.
First of all, thank you for hearing us on this conditional use permit. And one of the reasons we actually initially started launching this, just so the commission team here is aware, is because of the need for the preschools in our community. We actually, it was started out of us trying to meet a need in our city and going through, and we read a article that listed how there were wait times for preschool-aged children and up to a year in advance, sometimes two, in order to get into preschools. And so we, as a church, decided that what we wanted to do is meet a need in our community. So we started with that, got our approval for the CCC, as you heard earlier. And at this point, it has grown to the point where we're, with the exception of a few time slots, are at capacity. So we would like to extend this to meet the need in our community. We keep our fees to a very minimum, just to pay our staff. We actually don't pay to the church any sort of rentals at this point, just because we are trying to make it a area to meet a need in a community. And our teachers and our staff are very qualified, very wonderful people, who really should be getting paid a whole lot more, but they've decided to help us out. So to address the one question that was brought up before the recommendation is the parking situation. We are not 100% sure where it will land as far as which time slots will be in the most demand. And so it is hard to say, because we do not have a baseline of which to base, you know, which ones will be the highest demand areas. The morning tends to be a little bit more in demand, but other than that, it is just something where, as it's staggered, especially for pickup times, it is, we haven't had any sort of issues at this point. And also, we do not have any plans. One of the comments that was listed in the application was that we may develop the dirt lot. We have no plans to develop that dirt lot for parking at this time. We would not be using that for parking for parents or staff, because it is a dirt lot and does not meet with city codes. Other than that, we are just thankful for your time, and we would really appreciate your thoughtfulness on this. Do you have anything to say? Okay. And Joanne doesn't want to say anything.
I don't have anything.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
Do you have an outside area for the children to play in? And can you, excuse my voice, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you share with us more about, is this going to be an educational daycare? Or is it just, you know, can you elaborate on a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. At this point, we do not have an outside play area. It is more scholastic-based. We do have some indoor areas that we use for play, well-lit, open windows to help with the lighting. In our upper, what we call chapel area, it's on the plans, as you would see in the, that's listed there. And it is a very educational program. It is not, we had a hard time trying to figure out what we were actually supposed to apply for, because it is not, we don't see it as a daycare. It is a preschool. It is a, we use a BECA curriculum as our base, and it is a very wonderful curriculum base that, actually, one of our parents here wants to testify on in a little bit later and just say how great they love our preschool. So it is very educational. And, yeah, the only, the biggest caveat for us that was requiring this, so it was not seen as a, as an, what's the word I'm looking for, a religious education as well, is because we were offering it to three-year-olds instead of four-year-olds. Otherwise, the state law did not require that we work with Idaho Stars. But because we wanted to work with three-year-olds as well to open that up for the community, we decided to go that route.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Follow-up, absolutely.
Will any of the, Sydney, will any of the children be there the entire day? Or is each child limited to a three-hour time period? And are you going to set limits for each of those blocks of how many can be there at a time?
Yeah. So the, some children are there all day, based on the need for it. The best scholastic time really is in the morning time. And then it's the options of the, how long they really want them to stay. So it does come down to the 8:30, 11:30, and 3:30 time slots. We have it set as the 6:00 PM time slot, more so just for the parents that have the high need for that, but very few have chosen that at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Just a quick question on the pickup and drop-off. Is there a procedure in place where you have staff members out to receive the cars? Or is it more just, we're going to park and bring the kids in?
Yeah, at this point, we have the crosswalks that are set up, cones set up, reserved parking signs, because we want to make it very clear and very available. We put out the child safety flags at this point. As it grows, we will have staff members out there. But with 12 children at this point, it's not a very high need. We do lock the doors after 9:15 every morning, just for security purposes. And then our number's posted, so they can call and have a staff member come and unlock it after that.
How many children are you looking at in order to have something in place for parking in direction? And the reason I ask is, you know, being a parent myself and having to go through this sometimes, especially in a downtown area like this, traffic congestion can be a really big deal.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we would probably be looking at, I would say, about 20 kids, and that's where we'd be at.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just one clarification, 60 kids total, not 60 kids at a time? Or is it 60 kids at a, per class period?
Well, that's a great question. It depends on what's actually allotted in there. The way I read it as according to the law is 60 kids at a time, is the way I read that. But if that's not correct, I would appreciate the council telling me that.
I'm looking at staff, because it looks like they've got a question.
Stephanie, do you want to clarify?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I believe our code, maybe Bill can correct me if I'm incorrect, but our code does say that we need to state the maximum number of students allowed, so that we can approve that number here. So if you're thinking it's going to be 180 compared to 60, that's a difference that we would need to discuss, and...
Yeah, Commissioner, I think the intent behind the code on that particular requirement is, I don't anticipate them having 121, 120 kids there at all at one time. As Stephanie said in her presentation to you, it's staggered. But yes, our code does require that you deliberate on the number of children for that facility. But I also want to preface that the building code will also dictate as to the number of children that can be in that facility at one time. So there's a couple things working against them on this, but certainly, if you're comfortable with that number, I think we want something in the conditions of approval. Either say as allowed by building code, maybe the more flexible route to go, but if you're comfortable, I'm not sure if your curriculum says no more than 30 children, what is it per class, per those timeframes, if you would elaborate on that a little bit more?
Well, due to the class sizes, it's about no more than 18 kids per class, but we have multiple rooms. The other thing is, because it is a preschool, it's not a, typically a Monday through Friday. Most parents don't want their kids coming five days a week, is what we're finding. There's some that do, because their kids are very, at that age, class-driven, and they thrive in that kind of environment. But there's a lot of kids that find they just do better at three days a week. So when you limit to the 60 kids total students, what you're doing is you're really saying about 30 at a time. So that's kind of where that lands, because some parents are going to want two, some parents are going to want three. So we build it to meet the parents' needs and fit the community need there.
Mr. Chair.
Follow-up.
Follow-up question. So is the daycare just running Monday through Friday for the most part, or are there weekends too?
No weekends.
Okay, and one more question, too. During the week, obviously, the church isn't doing services on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but are there other purposes happening throughout the church building on the same days that you're doing the preschool?
Yeah, so there, actually, Joanne would be the best one to answer that.
So right now, we have mainly the women's Bible study, which is on Friday morning. And we do have a prayer meeting that's on Tuesday morning, but it is over by 7:00. Some people are still around, but if your question is concerning availability for parking, we have that already sorted out with our 40-some parking spots. So it's actually, works really well. And the way we have it right now, it works, we've got plenty of parking.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Chair. Steph had mentioned in their staff report a parking lot that is not currently paved, that may provide additional parking. Can you comment to their suggestion on that, what your thoughts are?
Yeah, earlier, I did mention that we do not have any plans to do anything with that gravel parking lot, or that, it's not actually a parking lot. It's a gravel lot, is what it is. So we're not planning on using that for any sort of parking.
If it's in the commission's desire to do so, is the church open to, or is the, are you guys open to that consideration?
We don't have the funds to do anything with that lot. And I think sometimes it gets called a parking lot, because a lot of downtown people will park there and go eat at a restaurant or different things like that. But right now, you could propose what you want, and then we could go back to our table and see what we could do. But right now, as of today, we probably aren't sure what we're going, I don't know. It's a big question, and it's a lot of money.
Do you own that property?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's a whole different discussion. Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just point out that in the UDC 11-4-3-9, under daycare facility, Section A1, states that in determining the type of daycare facility, which includes daycare center, the total number of children at the facility at one time, including the operator's children, is the determining factor.
Thank you.
It can be staggered. Thank you. Krista, we have public testimony.
Mr. Chair, there's one person signed in, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing, Lily Moyer.
Ma'am, thank you for being here tonight. Please give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Lily Moyer, 584 East Chateau Drive, Meridian. I'm sorry, I get so nervous, public speaking.
We'll take care of you, don't worry.
Thank you. Trying to remind myself it's only you guys, but I see. I have a daughter, and she's a very strong-willed daughter that we have. And so she's, she was three and a half when we started, almost four. And we were looking for a option for school. She's very smart, very intelligent. And really, all we found was the BECA program that would work really well for us personally. And my sister does it for her kids, but there's nothing locally that I could, you know, take her to, and then she could have somebody teaching her. And I just couldn't see her sitting in front of a computer, listening to a teacher, with how strong-willed she is. And we actually heard about this, and opportunity, and that it's flexible. And it was just a huge blessing to us, because I have two kids with disabilities, and, sorry, and I take them to therapy five days a week. And for me, it's a very big blessing to drop off Isabel, so she could learn and improve and be taught by somebody, which I don't know that I would have the time to do myself. And she has thrived so much. She, the educational part that they offer, our daughter went from knowing all her uppercase ABCs, she's actually a beginner reader. And this has been since September. It's been a very huge blessing for us, because she has learned so much. They're really good with discipline, she follows the rules, they follow through, and they're very consistent, and they're very kind and loving. And, I mean, I have only amazing things to say about their teacher. Their teachers are just so good, their teachers just think outside the box, depending on which child it is, you know. Isabel is just very smart, but she is quick to catch on, but she will fight you. But the teachers always follow through, and she learned that what they say goes, and she follows the directions, and she is, does all her homework, and she has learned so much. And just a quick example is, her teacher was so smart. She said, "I'm going to give you homework to actually not go to your parents' bedroom." For years, she's always coming at night, and we're telling her not to. And that, just because of how much she listens and respects her teacher, she actually listened to that. And she has no longer come to our bedroom since October or September it was. And, I mean, and just on the standpoint of Isabel moving forward, she's already a beginner reader. So for us, it would be really nice if they could expand and give her the opportunity to go next year to a higher skill class group. Because if she, if I just put her in a regular daycare, because she's, yeah, she won't be five until November, then, you know, it's, I feel like I'm going to actually hold her back by not letting her have the opportunity to get into a slightly higher educational point, if that makes sense. And so for us, this would be huge. I have three, maybe four nephews that are planning, my sisters are planning to put into this school. So just that alone, it's going to increase their number. I rave about this school, my sisters have all seen the difference. Our daughter is so much better, discipline-wise, and her knowledge and how much she's soaked in has improved so much, that all my family sees the difference. So, I mean, I drop her off five days a week, and with my children, you know, with disabilities, they have disabled parking, and they always have the cones and, you know, marked spots. So I've never had to, like, search for a parking spot or anything. I just park right at the beginning, right by the door. So it's really easy in and out, and it's just, I really hope that they could expand and give me the opportunity. Otherwise, I just have to homeschool her with the BECA program myself, and it'll be really hard for me. So...
We appreciate you being here, ma'am. Thank you very much for your comments.
Sorry, I'm such a crybaby when I'm nervous. Sorry about that.
We appreciate your passion and your...
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify on this application? Would the applicant like to come and close the discussion? Or do you guys have anything else to add?
I do have a question of the applicant.
Okay. Ma'am, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Diane Bryan, 2183 West Santa Clara Drive, Meridian, Idaho. And I'm like, my husband and I passed through the church over there, but my daughter's adopting a little child, actually, two little children from the foster care system. And this little child has been very incorrigible. And the woman that's there, we have a couple women there that are just outstanding, brilliant, smart, know how to capture the most needy child and bring them into a really happy environment. And I just want to say personally, just as a grandma, what I'm seeing with my granddaughter-to-be, we're going to adopt, they're going to adopt in a few months, just a change, and she's been in the program for three weeks. And I feel like it's a great program. So many parents don't know what to do with their children, they're kind of lost, and they want to keep them near and keep them at home. But, you know, it's pretty tough and pretty hard when you don't know what to do. And we have these women that have had years of experience, they're educators, and they decided to come back down from their higher education to work with little children. Really cool program. I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would the applicant like to come back? We have a quick question for you, sir. Commissioner Olson, go right ahead, sir.
So are you expanding?
So you're an existing program, and you're expanding to take in four-year-olds?
So we currently take three and four-year-olds, because that's the standard preschool age in our education system. And we would like to expand that. Right now, we're capped at 12. One of the comments you heard earlier was expanding to another level of preschool education is essentially what we're looking at. So like a pre-K kind of situation, but it still fits under that same umbrella.
I see, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
I apologize, going back to the parking questions, the necessity for that as a commission is that our role is to make sure that the community, that we both meet the needs of the applicant, but that the community is also not effective, affected in a negative way. And so what would you say are the amount of vehicles for church staff, volunteers, individuals visiting the church, and teachers, parents, that maybe they're helping volunteering? What's the overall number of vehicles that are there during the day that are not parents dropping their children off?
You know, that's actually a good question. Joanne, can I get you to answer that for me, please?
We use about 10 parking spots for staff, and we do have a Bible college at the church, which operates from early in the morning till 12 o'clock. And so we have some student parking in our west parking lot, and they are, they have to park over there and walk, because we keep our main parking lot, our larger parking lot, open for the preschool. And we, like Ben had said earlier, we have signs out there that it's reserved parking for the preschool. So that gives us plenty of parking for parents coming to drop off their children or pick them up. And we can extend that if we need to, and right now, it's working out great.
Mr. Chair.
Follow-up.
Do you typically have siblings that are coming together where there might be two or three, or I guess they probably don't have three, three to five-year-olds, but where there might be two that are coming together? I mean, where you're not having one vehicle per...
Yeah, we do have some that are coming as multiples or coming with, yeah.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
If I can also go back to your statement, also, some of the staff that come to the church that she mentioned, the 10, they also enroll their children as well. So that helps alleviate some of that.
And we have a lot of part-time staff, so they come and go throughout the week, so it's not like consistent every day. So the parking needs can change a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing on this application?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-0007 Harvest Church Preschool. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, same. Motion passes. Commission is properly before you. Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland, go first.
Go first, everyone with the silence. My first comment is, I really like when churches can use their space besides just on Sundays, because I always hate seeing an empty building just sit empty. I think having a preschool center makes a lot of sense for this facility. There's definitely a need for more preschool facilities throughout the valley. There's a lot of, lot of kids in our region that need education and need opportunities. So as far as the function, I think it sounds like a good fit for a conditional use permit. I don't have a lot of concerns with parking, because I know on Sundays, a building like that houses many more people than they're looking at for the Monday through Friday. If you were looking at real parking issues, it would probably be more for the Sunday events than anything else. You know, I've walked through this building in the past, attending it. At one point, they've got a lot of great classrooms in there. And, I mean, you can see that on the floor plans that they've submitted, too. There's a lot of space to spread out, and I think it, it looks like a good fit to me. That's first comments.
Commissioner, no voice? Would you like to say something? Madam Chair, would you like the space?
Again, I appreciate everybody for giving my voice this evening. This is, I mean, we've heard daycare and early education applications before. This one is unique, because typically, they have their own building space. And so you have the multiplicity of uses happening in one building and people coming and going. So this is, in that, in that there's multiple uses happening in the same building, even though it is much larger than a daycare would be. I think that's what makes it a unique decision. For the most part, it sounds like the applicant has already thought through how the vehicles are going to move, who's going to be on-site, security issues. They're already running the daycare, I don't like to call it a daycare, early education center, because there is a difference. It sounds like they've already thought that through, and then they're not necessarily going to take it from currently 12 students to 60. I think that was the main concern, is that you're not doing this 40-student jump at one time. one time. And so it sounds like that they'll, they'll appropriately staff and adjust things as necessary as they bring on new students. So that, all that to say, I'm in agreement with the staff's recommendation.
Mr. Seal or Commissioner Olson, yes.
I believe this is a good application, I don't think, I, I see no problem with it.
Mr. Seal, any comments?
I would agree and I appreciate the educational factor to it, not just a daycare, the fact that there's actually a curriculum to follow and, and you brought people in that actually are testifying it as to the effectiveness of it.
And I would agree, obviously you're doing something exceptional with that family behind you, so kudos to you guys. I, as you grow and look to, I, I would love to see something that's outside, that's just, I'm a get kids outside and let them play kind of thing, so I would love to see something if you guys, as you grow, would love to see that, something in the future, whether that's taking them into a park or something like that, but I, I think this is a, a good move for the city, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One more additional comment I just want to make too is because this is in our business district in the downtown area, the one nice thing is that when you have more people coming to a facility in the downtown, they're dropping their kids off for a couple of hours or three or four hours, they might be going to a restaurant in the downtown, they might be going to walk around, so it drives economic development a little bit as well. Just another comment to make.
Read point.
Just to make sure after the consensus of the commission, I don't think there were any concerns with anyone here about having the 60 kids at a time. Was there anything we needed to stipulate about that? Or would you be comfortable with a motion that has a wording in there about 60 kids at a time or as allowed by the building code?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
To staff, was that, was 60 children a request made by the applicant or was that something that the staff had, had recommended as a maximum or how did that number come about?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the applicant had indicated that they wanted to do 60 kids maximum. And our code does state that it needs to be a maximum number of clients. It reads, "The applicant shall not exceed the maximum number of clients as stated in the approved permit," or as stated in this title, whichever is more restrictive. So a number would be great. Additionally, if you would, if you're not wanting to require the parking lot, we'll need to strike that from the conditions in the staff. So just make sure you mention that in your motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the commission, just to provide comment on my previous testimony on, on the requirements. So even though this, you may, the commission may say 120 maximum or 60 students maximum, if the building code comes back and it's more restrictive, they're gonna be capped to that number. So that's, that's the point I wanted to make here, it's not, that's why it's important that we have a maximum number, but again, if it, if your number is greater than what the building code allows, they're gonna be capped at what the building code allows. Just clarification on that for the record.
Commissioner Holland, I think your motion to that point, I think per Andrea's comments before, I think that having the building code stated in there would probably be a good thing and I don't have a need to, for a parking lot. I'm not sure what else his comments or thoughts on, or for the paving of that parking lot or the dirt lot.
Mr. Chair, if I-
Commissioner Seal.
If I could ask, Mr. Parsons, do we know what the maximum capacity would be for a educational facility like this?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I don't, I don't know, it's gonna be dependent on the space, age of the kids, there's a lot of factors in the building code that kind of dictates what happens in that space.
And the reason I ask is because we have the, the dirt lot in question where as the facility would grow, we would probably want to see something in terms of more parking space or, you know, an, an outdoor facility for the children to play in.
Mr. Chair, I don't think that we as a commission specifically need to require the, the paving of that, but would recommend highly to the applicant that, that be kept in mind and I, I totally agree, an outdoor play area would be excellent. I know if you construct that on that, then that limits parking for your other services, so that's, that's the, I'm sure the concern primarily. But I don't, I don't think that as a commission, we need to require them to, to pay that or ask for that.
Commissioner Holland, did you have a thought or motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion unless there's other further deliberation we need to make.
Motions are always in order.
All right.
Go forth.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to, and we're not actually recommending this to, sorry.
That is correct.
We're just approving the conditional use permit, correct? Okay. So after considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve the conditional use permit for Harvest Church Preschool, file number H-2019-0007, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 21st, 2019, with the following modifications, that we would strike the condition in the staff report of requiring the parking lot to be paved and that we would limit the use of, to 60 kids at a time or maxed out at what is allowable by building code.
Second, that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Motion passes, congratulations, thank you. Commissioner Olson. You are absolutely, Commissioner Olson has, needs to leave and so we appreciate your being here for the time you could be, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time. Okay, at this time I will open the public hearing on H2019-0004, Real Life Church and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The next project before you is for a conditional use permit for a church in an ancillary daycare. The site consists of 0.68 acres of land, it's zoned IL and is located at 1098 North Hickory Avenue. To the north is an auction facility, zoned IL. To the south is undeveloped land and office space, zoned IL. To the east are offices and it's also zoned IL. And to the west is North Hickory Avenue and undeveloped land, which is also zoned IL. In 1982, as part of the Upland Industries Project, this property was annexed, it's part of a large area of land that was annexed. A preliminary plat and final plat for Treasure Valley Business Center was processed in 1984 as well and a planned development was processed in 1991 that categorized this and other land as IL, but also able to develop into residential, retail, commercial, or industrial land. A CUP is being requested to use the existing 7,500 square foot building as a church and daycare center as required in the IL zoning district. This property is subject to the planned development agreement that I just spoke of, which allows for the mix of uses. The applicant is requesting to operate a church with two Sunday services between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Attendance at their current location is about 100 adults and 50 children, they plan to accommodate more people at the proposed location. The daycare is proposed to accommodate 54 students, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 9:30 AM and 3:30 PM. There are currently 31 parking spaces available on the site, which exceeds the UDC standards for the IL zoning district. However, due to the number of projected parishioners and daycare students, the director has approved an alternative compliance request to allow for parking standard alternatives. One of those proposed alternatives includes shared parking agreements with two properties to the north of the subject site. The applicant is currently, those are depicted here, to the north. The applicant is currently discussing an app, or an agreement with this property to the south. They're finalizing kind of the wording with that. The applicant has also worked with ACHD to allow for on-street parking along Hickory Avenue throughout the weekend. The shared parking agreements do provide an opportunity to accommodate parking needs for church-related traffic on Sundays, but staff is concerned that church and daycare members may park in unimproved areas out of convenience, which could create code enforcement issues and a nuisance to surrounding properties. Since the church's hours of use occur on Sunday mornings, extra parking required for that use may not interfere with the parking needs of surrounding properties, which would help to mitigate congestion and parking issues. If parking needs for the daycare can be staggered, the impact on surrounding properties might also be mitigated. However, we do feel that a permanent solution to parking would be preferred, since the shared parking agreements can be canceled by either party at any time and are only applicable during the weekend hours. And onsite parking would be more readily available if, if they could figure something else out. Staff is under the impression that the same entity would own the subject property as well as the property to the south and so recommended that the lot to the south be improved and paved. However, the applicant actually intends to just purchase the property, or the subject property that is depicted here. And so the, the property to the south wouldn't, may not be an option for permanent pavement or expansion of parking options. Written testimony was received from Jim Boyd, who's concerned with the amount of onsite parking provided for the proposed church use and daycare use. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report and will stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Thank you Stephanie, would the applicant like to come forward? Please give us your name and your addresses for the record, please, our names and addresses.
Matt McNulty with New Design Architecture, 725 East Second Street in Meridian, Idaho.
I'm Justin Jordan, the lead pastor, 35 East Fairview, Meridian, Idaho.
So new to, Madam Commissioner, or Madam Chair and Commissioners, Justin is the pastor and I brought him up here to help with any of the particular questions that came up in the previous session. So just kind of a little backs, background, Real Life Ministries, they launched in 2008 with a focus to reach the world for Jesus, one person at a time. They've leased various facilities throughout the Treasure Valley and at this time are taking a step to establish a more permanent home at the, the present facility and hence the CUP at this time. So there are two sessions for church on Sabbath, or on Sundays, with a future forecast growth of about 120 adults with children that, that come with them. And just to clarify, the daycare is not a daycare, they are also seeking a preschool setting, which we feel would be a benefit to the surrounding area for those that work there, as well as the future developments that are relatively close to the current property of single-family and multifamily dwellings. So just trying to be a good member, Real Life Church has reached out to various community neighboring parcels to, you know, alleviate parking concerns and, and have established the additional parking agreements, which total up to 48 between the two par, the two properties, which again are only for Sundays. As the staff has mentioned, they have worked with ACHD to adjust the current sign language for parking on Hickory for the weekends only. Both the daycare times, which run from 9:30 till noon, and then there is a break in between that session and the following session, which is at 1:00 till 3:30. And both Sunday services, we feel are at times that traffic is very light in the surrounding area, but it also provides a benefit, again, right, to those individuals. And as far as students for the preschool program, there are multiple programs, the individuals can be in the morning or the afternoon of both, but there is that break in between the two sessions that an adult would have to arrange, you know, some sort of alternative time for, for that hour. Currently, they're, they're looking at two teachers and two classrooms and then about 16 three-year-olds and about 18 four-year-olds. With the future to, you know, grow into that about 54 number that was mentioned previously by the staff, there are currently no plans for external playgrounds or anything of the nature, however, right, as things grow, you know, that could be explored as, you know, that, that is a benefit to children. As was mentioned, the church only has funding to purchase the current property and the 31 finished parking stalls. So that's, I guess I, I guess I'll end there and open it up for questions.
Are questions of the applicant? Commissioner Perrow.
Mr. Chair, so I'm curious, the staff report says that you currently have about 100 adults and 50 children, as you mentioned, and, but the capacity would be about 200, that only allows for 50 more. Is, is that gonna work long-term and I'm just curious about that because I'm wondering about your lease agreements with the parking and whether those are annual or if you're buying the building, I assume you intend to be there for a long time, so how does that play into these arrangements with the parking and then your growth and how does all that tie together?
Go ahead and answer.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in sitting down with the businesses to the north and the one in the south, there's 30 parking spots where we have currently, the one in the south I believe has 25 and they've allotted another 30 to the north from Meridian Public Auction and then Diamond Line Delivery is for 20. So total, 30, 25, 55, it'd be 85 and then another about 105 parking spots, not including obviously parking on the street with ACHD as well, so. So that would be total amount of parking spots that we try and utilize. When it comes to those agreements, I've sat down with each of the business owners and asked them about that in regards to term and they, each of them said, I'm willing to partner with you on this, but I need to be able to protect my asset and my private property as well. And so any moment then I want to cancel the agreement, I want to be able to do that. And I said, okay, I understand that. So to the best of my ability, created a partnership agreement with them, but they also said at any moment if they wanted to step out, that they needed to have that ability, so.
And has the church considered a contingency plan if that happens or conversation has been had?
Yeah, I mean, the next step would be to, if, if any of that were to happen, then we'd have to go back to the drawing board of talking to other businesses in the area and say, hey, we've had a good relationship with these other businesses, but is there a way for us to partner potentially in, in using par, parking in other spots as well? So other than that, I don't have a, don't have a plan other than that for right now.
One more question, has there been any conversation, and I apologize if you already mentioned this, has there been any conversation with the, the owner, it's same owner to the, to the parcel to the south about the church acquiring that piece and using that for the church's purposes or?
The property to the south.
The property to the south.
And seeing if we can use their land or buy their land.
Or, or lease, a lease it, although it's my understanding that that would need to be paved in order to do that, but I would assume that at some point there'll be another building that would be put in there and that paving would be used. Has there been conversation with the owner?
We haven't had any conversations in regards to using that land yet, but I, I have reached out to our Realtor to figure out if there's a shared use access, shared access when it comes to there being parking there in the future and I haven't heard back yet from him on that, that just recently came up yesterday, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions to the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I guess the, can you give us a little more information on the, the modifications to the street signs that you've worked with ACHD on and exactly what, what was accomplished and, and you know, what do they say, how are you trying to steer traffic?
Yeah, so currently the street signs on Hickory state that there is no parking at any time. The new modified, modified sign is for weekends only, so it allows for weekend-only parking and then weekdays, there is no parking allowed on that street.
Can I also just clarify that there's no parking just in front of the building that we're purchasing because the business that was there was a sensory pediatric business that didn't want loud vehicle noises in front of their business and so just in front of the property, there's no parking, but to the north of the business and to the south, there is street parking that's available right now. So they would be changing it to parking allowed in front of, from my understanding, in front of our, our building for, for Sundays.
To the north of the building?
To the north of the building as well, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
My question is just, I, I'm curious to, to know why the area that's around the site is very industrial in nature. I don't know if that causes any concerns having a daycare facility next to a lot of, you know, different industrial companies out there, but I don't know if you'd be willing to share any thoughts about why you've kind of looked at this area in an industrial area instead of maybe another commercial area in town.
Yeah, we've looked, we looked at different places for about a year and the reality is is we're on a budget and there isn't a lot of commercial buildings that are available within our budget. And so this was the one that met, met our budget, but also we have a desire to stay in Meridian too, we feel called to be in Meridian. And so with our budget, the buildings that are available and staying in Meridian- and staying in Meridian, this was one of the only ones that we knew of at the time that were available, and they could actually work for us. We looked at one other building here in Old Town, but it wasn't cost-effective for us to actually look at remodeling it and use, allowing it to be used for our use, so...
Additional questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seale.
The modifications that were done to the signage to allow for parking to be there on the weekends is things, is that something that's permanent or is that something that they're doing just for now? I mean, and the reason I ask is because as things develop around there, there could be other businesses, obviously, that go in there that have a lot of weekend traffic as well.
At this time, it is permanent. However, right, things, things could change in the future, but the agreement between ACHD and the church is that they will be paying to replace the signs for the new verbiage, so...
Thank you.
How do you all intend to manage people parking on, I mean, you've got a bunch of vacant land around there, and I think code enforcement for the city is a very important thing. How do you plan to manage that?
For right now, I went and looked at the property a couple times. For where the parking lot is paved, there's a, there's a cement barrier that if someone wanted to drive over top of it, I guess they could if they wanted to, but there's a cement barrier that's actually prohibiting people from going into that vacant dirt lot. And so, obviously, if we see any of our members, if we were to purchase the building, doing that, we'd be enforcing, say, "You can't, that's private property. You can't, you can't utilize that property." So...
I think my concern would probably be across the street, but that's, I mean, similar situation.
Yeah.
Any additional comments or questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris, do we have people signed up to testify?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First is James Boyd.
Mr. Boyd, you want to come forward and... Please give us your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
My name is James Boyd, reside at 7103 North Spur Wing Rim Place, Meridian, Idaho. And I'm the guy that wrote a letter in, and you probably have read my letter, so I won't try to repeat it, but I, but for the record, I'll state that I'm not opposed to the church occupying the facility. What I am opposed to is the church occupying, not meeting the parking standards for, that are, that are needed for the facility. And I realize that they've got some parking off-site, and I look at a map and see how far people have to walk to get to the church, and knowing that most of us, including myself, want to park as close as a can to the front door, I think that it's, it's gonna be a, especially this time of the year, a tough one to get people to walk that far. And one of the things you've brought out is there are industrial properties, and the first property to the north, the photo you see is, looks like an empty parking lot, big lot, but you driven by it recently, it's a, an auction facility. It's all fenced and gated, and I'm sure they probably have a plan. You'll have to ask them what the plan is, but when you look at it, I don't see any parking. It's just jammed full of product for sale, for auction. And then the property further to the north is a trucking facility. I don't know if it operates just Monday to Friday. Most, I don't know, but if it's a 24-hour facility, weekends, trucks coming and going, most truckers run weekends, then you got trucks coming in and out of there, and you got kids and all that parking and going to church, I think you got a safety problem. And so, that's my thought, and I know some of the other parking lots around that they've asked, you know, that people aren't willing to sign an appropriate long-term parking arrangement, and it sounds like maybe these folks aren't either. So, if you don't have a long-term agreement, you don't really have much of anything. So, bottom line, I just think, other businesses, other churches in the community, I've been in the community for a long time, and, you know, every city has parking requirements, and there's a purpose for that, you know, so you can handle the parking. And so, like I say, while I don't have a problem with the church, but I think just an undersized facility for where I would think they'd want to grow to and meet the parking unless they want to acquire land to do that. And I'm sure also, I guess, one of the other thoughts that's in my mind, they state that they're strictly a Sunday morning church, church I attend, and some of the others are, you know, these have, you know, women's Bible studies, they've got youth groups and so on and so forth. So, a little bigger impact than I think that's probably been presented this evening, and that's why I'm here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Appreciate it.
Next is Sam Johnson.
I work at 2701 East Pine in Meridian at 83642. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the, all the four, the four lots that are just across the street of this property, as well as the two office buildings that are just south of this. We own those four lots that are vacant currently, the building at 8501 Hickory, and then also the newly-built building at 2501 State Avenue. And, and we're, we oppose this for the same reasons that the previous testimony is given, that it feel like this is an incomplete application that doesn't, the parking is a concern. The, I completely understand a joint partnership with temporary parking agreements. I'm also the, my main job is Chief of Staff for SNC, and we have used and allowed others to use parking lot, our parking lots for different events in the community, and well aware of those temporary challenges that those, the challenges that those temporary agreements cause, the damage, the wear and tear on grounds and landscaping that occur. But for a permanent, long-term solution, I don't, there is no permanent, long-term solution for enough parking spaces for this property. So, we're concerned that, that that will encroach into our property, cause our property, you know, issues. I'm not completely in agreement with why ACHD decided to change the parking on that street, on Hickory, without even notifying or discussing those, that change with us, with the other property owners. So, similar, similar concerns with Mr. Boyd, but I stand for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, there are no additional signings.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify in this application? Do you want to close, sir, or do you want to testify?
Close.
Okay. The applicant would like to come back forward.
I just have a kind of a brief synopsis to share. I do want to kind of point out that we do meet city standards for current requirements of parking, albeit they are pretty, no worries, albeit they're pretty lax for industrial areas for a purpose and a reason, as well as running the numbers in our office. We meet them for any commercial zone as well, for any adopted and approved city parking. And they have, you know, the church has gone above and beyond basic code to provide additional parking for their members at this time with what funds they can afford to do.
Since the beginning of our existence as a church 10 years ago, we've been a church that desired to be a giver to this community, not takers. We've, we have invested heavily into this community because we want to make this city great, and we desire to show this community the goodness of Jesus that we profess and serve. One example of how we've done this is by investing in giving back. In the fall of 2016, we gave every teacher and student at Meridian Elementary, which is a Title I school that struggles with poverty, 500 brand-new pair of shoes as a way of saying we believe in you and we appreciate you. We've been a mobile church meeting at Mountain View High School for the past eight years and have a fantastic relationship with them and have had the honor of blessing their faculty over the years. When we approached the city about purchasing this building, we were directed to work with ACHD on street parking and partner with local businesses on parking agreements. We were fully aware that the use of parking on Sundays would be problematic without a plan of cooperation with ACHD and business neighbors when it comes to this facility. ACHD responded quickly after reaching out that they'd be able to open up parking for us on Sundays. As you already know, we have parking agreements with two other businesses and one that we're in process with. We've done our best to provide solutions so that we can continue to be a blessing to this community like we started out 10 years ago. We desire to see a community come together and support each other. We've seen in our churches in downtown Meridian who have come against similar obstacles and have come to create solutions. Two churches that have park agreements that I've been told of, Harvest Church and the Meridian United Methodist Church. Parking is problematic at both these churches, but the community coming together has created solutions to those obstacles and allowed them to continue to be a blessing to this community. Our potential preschool that we desire to launch in this location during the week is driven by the fact that we can serve those that work and live close by. In addition, the lack of preschools that are wanted by residents in this community would be a benefit to those that will be living next to us as a residential development is being built to our west currently. We do not believe parking will be an issue as parents will just be dropping off and picking up. They will not be parking for a long period of time. I've driven down Hickory Avenue nearly every Sunday at 9:30 a.m. since our December 11th meeting with the city. I have counted one car on all those Sundays parked on Hickory Avenue. With our parking, the parking agreements and street parking allowed by ACHD, the impact hours being on Sunday morning when all businesses are closed, would you not believe that we'll have a negative impact on our community? If we did, we wouldn't be moving forward with the desire of purchasing this building as we only desire to have a positive impact on our city. In addition, we are only impacting others through street parking and parking agreements on 2% of the total hours given in a week. We are asking you would grant us our CUP and allow us to have a permanent base of operations in this city for years to come so that we continue to be a blessing and partner with other businesses and public entities in making Meridian the great place it is. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Any additional questions for applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perot.
My concern, this is a question and a statement. My concern regarding the parking agreements are really involve, really involve liability. So, if you have somebody, and hopefully your church members would not do this, but there's always a possibility of those parking lots not being cleaned, not being appropriately maintained, and someone gets injured and there's a legal action that's taken, and then, and then the owner of that parking lot's countersuing the church for coverage, right? So, that being said, I would say that, I don't know if you've had those conversations, but that might be a reason that a parking lot agreement would fail and that parking lot owner would withdraw because the lease agreements do allow them to do that. And then now, all of a sudden, you're, you're having difficulty and you're having church services every Sunday, so it's an immediate challenge. So, that being said, has there been any conversation amongst, amongst your decision-makers regarding those possibilities? And how would you address that?
We reached out to our insurance agent and said, "Can we extend liability insurance onto these parking agreements on these parking lots?" And he has informed me that we can extend our liability insurance onto their parking lot so that if anything happens during those hours, our liability insurance would step in and take care of any, any accidents or injuries that take place.
And for clarification, I know that's private property, but obviously, then the city gets involved if there's police services and other services that are being provided. So, that's the nature of the question as well.
Commissioner Holland? No? Good.
Questions right now?
Good. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing on H2019-0004. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion passes, and the application is before the commission. Thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seale, you look like you're ready to go.
I'm still formulating. I mean, I very much appreciate the, the nature of, you know, an educational facility like this for, for children. The concerns that I have are definitely, and I think it's been shared by everybody here, is definitely the parking and traffic situation. You know, we're, we are creatures of convenience, so the fact that ACHD came in and did allow parking on Hickory during the weekend, to me is, to me, that causes concern, and as you can see, there's already, you know, one person here that's, or two people here that are giving testimony to that, that that is a concern, that there's going to be parking on that street in an area that there, we don't know what the use of all that other land is going to be at this point in time. Is it going to be a business that will be impacted by that? If it is, then obviously, those businesses have the ability to go back to ACHD and ask for that, you know, the signage to be changed as well. And, you know, considering it was prior, no parking, then they would likely have a leg to stand on with that. So, I would like to, as, my concern with the parking is that there isn't anything permanent in place, and that I believe that there does need to be something permanent in place in order to help facilitate parking, you know, as a Plan A, not necessarily a Plan B. And there will more than likely be more activities that go on as the church expands and grows. As, you know, somebody that, you know, has attended churches as a youngster, youth programs and things like that develop and take off, and they're very, you know, they're very much an integral piece of the church, but they're also something that's going to cause more, more traffic and other things like that to happen in the church itself as it does grow.
Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, this is a tough one for me because, obviously, we always want churches to be successful and they're a great community asset, and you've, you've done your due diligence, you've been working really hard with ACHD, with neighboring properties, and trying to figure out a plan and a formula. And I know how tough the real estate market is right now, especially if you're going to be considering a new construction project. It's really tough to find land and affordable prices to be able to put up a building like this. My biggest concern, echoing my fellow commissioners' thoughts here, is parking could be a big challenge for this site, and I know they're looking for a long-term location, and I think that's what makes it more challenging too, is it doesn't allow for a lot of growth opportunity to, beyond where they're at right now. And it's also an area that's industrial in nature, and I always like to see the highest and best use we can for, for areas of town as we, as we can. And this area wasn't necessarily designed for this type of, of use, even though it certainly could be retrofitted and, and function there. I worry about the parking, I worry about the circulation. Pulling up just a Google image search of what that street looks like, there's, it looks like their sidewalk on one side of the road, but not on the other side. So, the, the two properties that they've looked at on the north would have that sidewalk on there, so that, that's good. But if they ever decided to work with the group across the street, there might be some challenges too with having safe pedestrian access to the site. So, I guess that, I echo similar concerns. I worry about the parking and I worry about the long-term plan if, if their partnerships didn't work out.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perot.
I think my fellow commissioners said it very well. I'm, I agree with all of the concerns that, that they brought up, and it also limits the, the church's ability to have, you know, if they want, in their expansion, want to have additional events and functions, that, that might limit them, and you just don't know what, what may come. So, the question I have for my fellow commissioners is, do we want to continue this and allow them to discuss possible parking options with the owner to the south? Because they, that owner does own both, both pieces. Or, what are your thoughts?
That was actually one of my, my exact question is, do we want to allow them to go back and figure out if you can get permanent parking in place for at least an extended period of time? Because I want to see churches grow in our community and do well. And I have the same comment Commissioner Holland has said, using industrial space in our city is, gotta be used well and, and just the best use possible, but I don't want to turn the good pastor and his church away from having a space that they can utilize. It sounds like you guys have been great neighbors to Rocky Mountain High School, and that's great. We just want to make sure you're successful and not at war with your neighbors immediately out of the gate. And so, what are your thoughts, commissioners? Because I would love to... Because I would love to hear if we want to give them a chance to see if they can put something more permanent in place that they can bring back to us for comment? Or what are your thoughts?
Commissioner Seal.
Thank you. I think it's worth, you know, definitely letting them see if they can come up with, you know, an alternative to the current parking situation, something that's going to be more permanent or something that would include some kind of permanent expansion to the parking that's already there. I think they've done a good job in approaching this. I mean, obviously you worked with ACHD, you got the signage that's there, you have worked with your neighbors. But the fact that a lot of this is temporary in nature is definitely very concerning and, you know, like to give you another chance to see what you can do about it to make it more permanent.
Commissioner Pro.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Seal. I would like to give the church additional opportunities, see what other options they may find. And also just want to say, we see a lot of applications, and I appreciate how well you have tried to see through everything that the staff has recommended to you prior to coming and that you've had those conversations and made every attempt to figure out a solution prior to coming. That's very appreciated by the commission for sure. So yes, I think it would be, and if I understand it correctly, Andrea, would we need to reopen the hearing to continue?
Yes. Yes. And then the clerk might be able to provide you with a date?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One other thing we didn't really talk about too is the site itself. And I know in the last application, we were talking about having outdoor play area if there's going to be a daycare facility or preschool learning facility, whatever it might look like. The one limitation I see with this site is it's going to be really tough to have some of those outdoor amenities because of the nature of the surrounding area. And so while I'm open to continuing the application to discuss potential parking solutions, I wish I could go help them and have a perfect building that's in the right location for them. That's not something we have. We're looking at the application that's in front of us. But I see some other challenges potentially with the site too. So I don't want to lead them down a rabbit trail to come back and then have other challenges to address later too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
On that topic, I have a question for staff. Is it in the commission's purview to allow conditional use permit for the church operation with their parking as is or if we continue and they have another solution but not regarding the daycare usage? Are those, is it all together or can they be separated or what's our?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes. You can, the request is really twofold, daycare and church. So you can deny one and make the findings for denial or what you think they could do to gain your approval for that particular use. The other thing that I wanted to provide clarification on is a couple of things happening with this application. One is, as the applicant has testified, they do meet current code for the parking. But this is a conditional use permit and you can require things, require more parking. So that's not my point. But my point is, our conditions in our staff report is we've required the applicant to pave the property to the south 1070 to include more parking. That's a condition in the staff report right now. So if you feel that's something that's going to mitigate your concerns, that's a condition and the applicant can work with the owner and figure that out. The other issue that I don't want to get too sideways on is the off-site parking, the shared parking. The director's staffs already approved that off-site parking through alternative compliance. Certainly, again, if that, so we're kind of, we're in a gray area there. We've already agreed to let it have some of that off-site parking because we made those findings that they did meet what code requires. The code requires that the parking be within a certain walking distance from the proposed use. It met that criteria. They were to have an executed agreement. Two of the three properties have given us that, so they've executed that agreement. What code doesn't say is the terms, how we handle the terms of that agreement. That's where it's, we, so we are, don't hear me wrong, don't get me wrong. We are concerned that there is, we can cut this off at any time. I think that's a valid concern. But right now, when we analyzed the alternative compliance request for the shared parking, we found that there is a sidewalk. So the areas that they're going to use the shared parking has a pedestrian connection to this property. That's check one. Two, there's a shared agreement for two of the properties. Two, check two. And then they're within that thousand-foot linear distance that they needed to be. So that's why we made a finding that it was consistent and it did meet code, and we supported the alternative compliance. And then to throw that on top of it is they worked with ACHD to get a segment of that road to be on street parking. So they removed those hurdles. So I think the applicant, he's stated it correctly, he's done everything that staff's asked him to do. Now it's in your purview whether or not you want to see more onsite parking. That's really what you need to dive in. And so if you feel like that's property to the south of this needs to be landscaped and parked, as recommended by staff, and that's where you may want to continue and give them direction to work with that property owner and figure out a parking solution to provide more onsite parking for this use and the daycare use. And it is within your purview if you want some kind of outdoor space too. Code doesn't require it, but if that's something, because of the industrial nature of this particular use for daycare and having children, it makes some sense to have, maybe it does make some sense to fence off the backyard and use that lawn area or do something. I don't know at this point, but I'm just giving you things to consider as you deliberate.
So I'm going to take us further down the rabbit hole then. Because I, so we talked about code enforcement and things where we lose the ability to, whether it's annexation or it's, you know, we're going through a CUP or whatever it is, how do we make sure that after, five minutes after this conversation's over, those agreements go away? How do we make sure that, I mean, because that's my biggest concern, is there's no certainty for the homeowner, the property owners around that, that those conditional, those, their conditional agreements go away. How do we enforce that?
Well, Mr. Chair or co-chair, members of the commission, it's a land use approval. It's an alternative compliance, and that's one of the requirements or findings that we have to make, that they're meeting the intent of that shared agreement. That's a condition, that they comply with that alternative compliance. So if the adjacent properties see that parking is an issue, they call the city and then we pull that and we see that that's been revoked, and we have an issue and we can revoke their approvals. Thank you. Additional questions, comments for staff? Thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I still struggle with this one, but I think at a minimum, I would like to see more onsite parking, just for the nature of the reasons we've all talked about, whether that's working with the property to the south and seeing if they can purchase it and pave it. If there's a daycare facility, I would like to see some outdoor space because of the nature of the area that it's in and its industrial nature. I'd like to see a fenced area that kids could play in safely, especially if they're working with little kids. Just a couple of thoughts too.
Additional thoughts? Commissioner Pro.
There we go. Stephanie, or Bill, do we have the approximate square footage of the building?
Square footage? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm curious about.
I think it's approximately 7,500 is what the applicant had stated in the.
I'm just thinking about interior versus exterior use and space and how much space there is. I agree with Commissioner Holland that I'd like to see some more onsite parking. Just, I don't know that it's our responsibility to figure out what that looks like, but I think that that is necessary.
I would agree with that. I mean, essentially more parking is going to be required, so it's, if we can allow them to figure out how to address that, I think it would be in, you know, the best interest of everybody. That way it gives them a chance to, you know, take a stab at that, see what they can come back with, and then we can talk about that at the next meeting. Without, I mean, essentially that's, to me, I agree with the outdoor area. I mean, for anything that's going to be considered a daycare, I mean, we, you know, addressed that in the last application as well, where, you know, obviously as the more children grow, we want to see them, you know, move outside when possible in, you know, and especially in a daycare or educational facility. But the parking piece for sure is something that I think needs to be addressed.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
So they are requesting approximately 54 students, just six less than the last application. And in our conversation, the consideration that was in my mind for why we would not require them to have the exteriors, because that's a very large building and there's space there. But this is a much, much smaller space for almost the same amount of students that would be present. And so thinking that through a little bit more, I think it would be wise for us to require an outside area be used as part of the daycare.
And there is space to the east, at least along that property line that's grassed in. I'm not sure how it can be utilized, but there is a little bit of space there. I think the parking issue is not necessarily daycare, it's the Sunday mornings, and that's my challenge. Does anybody have a consensus thought? Formulate it into a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I'm wondering if we open up the public hearing and we could ask the applicant to come back forward if we reopen it to address any of these concerns before we make a continue motion, if we'd like to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
I have a question for Andrea. In the past, I believe you've said that the purpose of reopening the hearing is just to get a date set and to not continue with testimony?
You can open it and continue it for a purpose that is stated, and there could be additional testimony received on the reason for the continuation.
Okay.
And we'd like to have a date to which it's set over to, which is provided by the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with opening the public hearing if you'd like to hear from the applicant. I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for Real Life Church, H20190004, for the purpose of asking the applicant some additional questions and also establishing a date to continue the hearing if the applicant chooses to do so.
Second.
I have a motion of a second to reopen the public hearing on H2019-0004. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Say name. Motion passes. Would applicants like to come forward real quick so we can ask you a couple of questions? Commissioner Holland, do you want to start?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we appreciate you, you guys being here. You guys have done a lot of work. And again, we want to reiterate, we want you to be successful, we want you to find a good long-term location that's going to work really well for your church. There's obviously some concerns about long-term location from some of the comments that were made from public testimony, some of the written comments received, the industrial nature of the area. But I don't know if you have any thoughts on what we were deliberating on here on whether or not you'd be open to working with the property owner to the south to create some additional onsite parking?
The, I guess the quick answer would be, yeah, I don't know how that's going to happen, but we can go back to an eldership, our eldership and talk about if it's what the city wants. Do we want to walk down that path or not? I don't, I don't know how we're going to do that financially, so.
I would suppose that you could have a conversation with the current owner about a lease or something like that, but I would encourage you to have that conversation if you haven't already. Question I have is, is there a particular reason that it's no longer working for you to be at the high school? Is there something about that that's causing you to pursue this avenue? Or is it fine for you to stay there if you choose to take a different course?
Right now, we have a great relationship with Mountain View. At the same time, at any moment, if they told us that they no longer wanted us there or that they weren't going to have custodial staff to be there for us on Sunday morning, we would have to go and figure out another alternative. We have a good relationship with them, but obviously it's not long-term. It does have limitations in the sense of classroom space. You know, we've maxed out our classroom space there when it comes to use. Teachers have to be willing to open up their classroom when it comes to us renting and using that facility. It has limitations in the sense of, you know, it's, do we have our own home? And that has implications with our congregation and all of that, but how we can also bless the community in other ways, so.
Well, thank you. I, again, echoing their thoughts, we definitely think churches are a huge asset and that we want to make it as possible for you guys as we can, so.
It's just a tough one. So we, if you're willing and able to take this on, we really, I think we'd like to be able to give you an opportunity to bring us something that might fit more in with our, I think what, I think what the staff has outlined for us is that we need additional parking onsite. And I think, and I think with the daycare piece, having some outside, some type of an outside activity that the kids can utilize, I think that, those are the two directions, if I'm not mistaken, that we're looking for. Is that something you're willing to do if we give you guys some time?
I'd be open to investigating and figuring out how that could possibly take place. Yeah.
Okay. Because what I don't want you to do is, we want you guys to be successful, and that's the biggest piece. And I, what I don't want to do is set you out for failure out of the gate where there's, the challenges from the neighbors are immediate, and that's a big concern of mine. So.
Do I have, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, for clarification, our options as a commission are to approve or continue or deny. And if we deny an application, or in this case, it is our final decision, it doesn't go to city council, then you're not permitted to resubmit that application for a year. And so it's a benefit to you for us to suggest the continuance.
Yeah.
Just for your understanding.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Did you have an additional comment?
I just had a question in the sense, am I allowed to?
Absolutely.
It seemed like there was some miscommunication that we found out about this week in regards to the city. They thought that we were actually leasing the building, and that's why they brought up about that parcel of land before. From my understanding from Jeremy New Design, he informed to me that the city can't mandate or ask for us to purchase that land as long as we're meeting code. So is that, is that true or not true? I don't know.
We can't mandate that you're purchasing the land, but they can ask for off-site improvements to make sure you meet code or comprehensive plan requirements. And I don't want to put words in Bill's mouth, but I'll let him answer that specifically. But they can ask for our off-site to make sure you're meeting the intent of what our code says.
And so that goes back to what you're saying about potentially leasing that land is what I'm hearing you say.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
So not only can they ask for the off-site, but they could say, we want you to have more onsite, which only leaves you so many options.
Sure.
Well, the reason we're suggesting that area to the south is because that was something that the staff had mentioned in their staff report as an option you would potentially pursue. But again, like he said, we can't make you go buy that piece of property.
Sure.
If staff recommended that there were off-site improvements, we could do that. But it sounded to us like that was a consideration that staff wanted you to make.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
In looking at the land that's available there, I mean, essentially the land to the south already has a paved area that looks like, I mean, instead of having to go and purchase a big plot of land or anything, it would just, you know, essentially need, you know, some kind of long-term lease agreement or long-term agreement or understanding of, you know, being able to designate that as parking, stripe it out as additional parking to, you know, probably double the amount of parking that's available right there. And then with the tenant or the owner of that land, when they go into business, if it's a Monday through Friday kind of place, obviously that's going to work for both places to have that parking there and available. So, I mean, something that, if I were looking at this and, you know, thinking outside of the box, that might be something that I would bring to them is, you know, in order to have some kind of long-term lease agreement or understanding that's in place, you know, the ability to stripe that out and provide that additional parking at your expense, and then when they develop that business, that they're going to also be using that parking, then it would be a win-win, something along those lines. So, you know, again, we want you guys to be successful and, you know, we'd like to see something come back on the parking, but, you know, also we understand that budgets are budgets.
Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
Do we need to establish a date for the?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Sorry, would you come forward?
Sorry, gentlemen, I forgot, when would you?
Sorry, gentlemen, I forgot, when would you like to come back and see us? When, Bill, when's our next? Sorry, is it reaching for my calendar?
Your next three hearings, sorry, I'm not Bill, but March 7th, March 21st, and April 4th, the next three.
You, how long do you think you need? So that it's March 7th, the 21st, or April 4th?
Um, just to be safe, I guess, April 4th would probably be best in the sense of, I have no idea, I don't know how long the process will take. It could, I don't know. But if I, April 4th is the next date, the latest date, I'd be willing to.
We can, and we can move it beyond that if you need to. Those are the next three.
Yeah.
So. And if you get caught into a situation, I'm sure you could request continuance from the city.
Okay.
So there's always an option for that.
Okay. Let's go April 4th then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Holland.
I move to continue file number H-2019-0004 for Real Life Church to the hearing date of April 4th for the following reason, that we'd like the applicant to come back with, after doing some due diligence, to see if they can work with the neighboring property on the south to get more onsite parking for their facility and also bring forward some considerations for outdoor space for the daycare preschool facility.
Again.
I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for Real Church, Real Life Church, H-2019-0004 to the date of April 4th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate your patience and working with us. Okay, moving to the last item on our docket.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're going to pause for a moment. Give us a.
Five-minute break.
Mr. Clerk, are we ready?
Mr. Chair, we are ready.
Ms. Allen, are we ready? Maybe? She doesn't want to talk to me? Hi! So, we will reconvene, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and we will open the public hearing on H-2018-0129 Stapleton LLC, or Stapleton Subdivision, sorry, and start with the staff report.
Alrighty, thank you. Commission, the next applications before you are request for annexation and zoning, preliminary plat, and a variance. The variance does not require commission action, although the commission can make a recommendation if you wish. This site consists of 35.67 acres of land, zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located at the southwest corner of West Harris Street and South Meridian Road and State Highway 69. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north are single-family residential uses, zoned R4 and R8. To the west is future multifamily residential, zoned R40. To the south is future mixed-use developments, zoned RUT in Ada County. And to the east is State Highway 69. And across the highway is future mixed-use development area. It's currently undeveloped land. This property was part of a larger area, which included the property to the south, that was part of an annexation that amended the future land use map to change the land use designation from medium-density residential to mixed-use regional for the overall property. An annexation application was also approved, however, the development agreement was never signed, so the property was never annexed and the approval has since expired. The comprehensive plan future land use designation for this property is mixed-use regional. And I'll just read you a little bit about that designation from the comp plan. The purpose of this designation is to provide a mix of employment, retail, and residential dwellings and public uses near major arterial intersections. The intent is to integrate a variety of uses together, including residential, and to avoid predominantly single-use developments such as a regional retail center with only restaurants and other commercial uses. Developments should be anchored by uses that have a regional draw with the appropriate supporting uses. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of 38.15 acres of land with an R15 zoning district, a preliminary plat consisting of 213 building lots and 22 common lots on 35.67 acres of land, and a variance to UDC 11-3H-4B for access via State Highway 69. The site is proposed to develop with a mix of residential uses consisting of 212 single-family residential units, 96 of those attached units, and 116 of those detached units, and 28 multifamily residential uses, seven structures, four complexes, for a total of 240 residential units at a gross density of 6.73 units per acre. A concept bubble plan was submitted, as shown, that depicts how this site is proposed to develop and how the adjacent property owner to the south plans to develop the adjacent property with a mix of office, multifamily residential, and commercial uses. The overall mix of uses planned for this area is consistent with that desired in the mixed-use regional designation. And all of staff would prefer to see a higher density in this area because of its proximity to a major transportation corridor, State Highway 69. The density which falls at the low end of the six to 40 units per acre desired in the MUR designation is within the desired range at 6.3 units per acre. There is a north-south Collector Street designation on the master street map across this site, and that is shown there on the map on the right. It was, the intent was for, to provide access between Harris Street and Amity Road. This designation was placed on this property back in 2008, when the future land use amendment to mixed-use regional was approved because of the intensity of uses planned with the associated development, and that development plan is shown there on the left, and the need to disperse traffic to the existing and future signals at Harris Street and State Highway 69 and Amity and State Highway 69. The street was intended to serve as a baggage road for the commercial development along State Highway 69 as required by the UDC. However, the property was never annexed and the property wasn't developed as intended. The proposed plat depicts a short segment of the Collector Street at the north boundary from Harris Street to the first intersection, and at the south boundary from State Highway 69 to the north to the first intersection and to the south boundary for future extension. That is, just go to this map real, right here. The Collector Street will go to here, and then it'll come in here at the southeast boundary, and then go up to this street, and then to the south. Staff and ACHD agree that the construction of two discontinuous Collector Streets meet the intent of the master street map and doesn't preclude construction of the southern segment in the future, and is acceptable in the absence of the previous development plan. One access is proposed at the north boundary via West Harris Street, a Collector Street, and one full access is proposed via State Highway 69, although ITD is only in support of a right-in, right-out, left-in access. The police department is not in support of the left-in access to the site for safety reasons. A Collector Stub Street is proposed at the south boundary for future extension. Staff is requiring access to be provided to the west to the future multifamily development where none is currently proposed, in accord with the comp plan, which encourages interconnectivity between developments, and the UDC, which requires local street access to be provided to any use that currently takes access, excuse me, direct access from a Collector Street, which is Harris Street at the north boundary. The UDC prohibits new approaches directly accessing a state highway. Public street connections to the state highway are only allowed at the section line road and at the half-mile mark between section line roads. This access is at the quarter mile. However, requests for variance can be made to City Council for the placement and/or number of access points to state highways as requested by the applicant with this development. However, findings do have to be made in order for council to approve a variance as follows. The variance can't grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allows, otherwise allowed in the district. Two, the variance relieves an undue hardship because of characteristics of the site. And lastly, the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The plat is proposed to develop in five phases, as shown on the phasing plan on the left. The first phase is dependent on access via the state highway. The second phase will have access via Harris Street, followed by the third phase at the corner of Harrison and State Highway 69, and the fourth phase directly west of Phase One. The fifth phase will be the multifamily residential development, which will require approval of a conditional use permit prior to development. The applicant proposes the following improvements with each phase. The State Highway 69, South Meridian Road roadway improvements, 10-foot-wide multi-use pathway and street buffer landscaping along the full length of the project boundary along State Highway 69 and South Meridian Road. And Phase Two, the West Harris Street roadway improvements, including curb, gutter, and detached sidewalk, and street buffer landscaping along the full length of the project boundary along West Harris Street, and installation of the traffic signal at West Harris Street and State Highway 69 when traffic warrants. Prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancies for each of these phases, the associated improvements, as proposed by the applicant and required by staff, are required to be completed. If council doesn't approve the variance for access via State Highway 69, the Harris Street improvements, including the signal, are required to be completed with the Phase One. The traffic impact study will need to be updated to reflect the new trip distribution and volumes. The preliminary plat will need to be revised and reconfigured to remove the access, and a new phasing plan will need to be submitted. A minimum of 10% or 3.57 acres of qualified open space and two site amenities are required for this development. The applicant is proposing open space and site amenities in excess of the minimum required. A total of 13.9% or 4.95 acres of qualified open space is proposed, consisting of half the street buffer along State Highway 69, the buffer along Collector Streets, a few parkways along local streets, common areas containing pathways, a small dog park, and a half-acre central common area. Site amenities consist of a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system within the northwest pipeline corridor at the southwest corner of the site, a multi-use pathway within the street buffer along State Highway 69, a park with children's play structures consisting of a 24-by-36-foot play structure, swings, climbing dome, rock-climbing boulders, basketball court, big-wheel track, and seating area with four-foot-tall wrought iron fencing with a gated entry surrounding the park for children's safety, and a dog park for small dogs with seating areas. A six-foot-tall concrete fence on top of a four-foot-tall berm, as shown there, 10 feet above the center line of the adjacent road, is proposed in accord with UDC standards for residential developments adjacent to state highways, and that is proposed adjacent to State Highway 69. The Carlson Lateral runs along the, oops, wrong way, west boundary of the site, and that is in this common area right here. And it has been piped. The easement for the lateral is outside of the adjacent building lots. The northwest gas pipeline runs along the southwest corner of the site, and that is this area right here. And it lies within a 75-foot-wide easement contained in a common lot. All development within this easement is required to comply with the Williams Pipeline Developer's Handbook. Because of the narrow lots, which are around 32 feet wide for detached homes and associated driveways, there is not adequate room for on-street parking in front of those lots for guest parking, and in some areas, parking is quite a ways away. Where attached homes are proposed, there is room for approximately one space per every two lots for on-street parking. On-street parking is also available adjacent to common lots. The applicant submitted an exhibit, as shown, that demonstrates available on-street parking for the development, which amounts to approximately 109 spaces available. which amounts to approximately 109 spaces available for guest parking. Conceptual building elevations and photos were submitted for the proposed single-family attached and detached units and the multifamily structures. The single-family attached and multifamily structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. Structures adjacent to West Harris Street and State Highway 69 are proposed to all be single-story in height, except for those on lots 60 and 62, Block 1, which will be two stories in height. And those are just these two lots right here. To avoid monotonous wall planes, the rear of structures visible from Harris Street and State Highway 69 are required to have varied setbacks. This property is on a significant slope. The ground's quite a bit higher, and it slopes down to the state highway, so it's likely that these homes will be visible even with a wall across the frontage. Written testimony has been received from Kimberly Porter, Evan and Annalyn Frazier, Sandy and Randy Nelson, Will Dillmore, and they are all in favor of the housing options and affordability provided with this development. Staff is recommending approval of the annexation and zoning and preliminary plat and denial of the variance. Staff is recommending a change to the development, excuse me, Development Agreement Provision Number 1F in Section 8 to require local street connection specifically, rather than just a vehicular connection to the west property boundary, to the future multifamily development as required by UDC 11-3A-3A3. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Sonia. Any questions for staff? Not yet.
Also, one clarification, if I may. The applicant did submit a response to the staff report. One thing specifically, they asked to not be required to provide painted curbs and no parking signs for the areas like where the 27-foot-wide street section was proposed, where parking's only allowed on one side of the street. After I received the applicant's request, I did touch base with Joe Bonjorno, our fire department, and he did specifically say that he did want both the curb and signage provided. Thank you.
Commissioner Perro.
Mr. Chair, Sonia, it states in here that the lots will be approximately 32-foot wide. Is the, are the interior setbacks also less than five feet?
They are, yes. The 32-foot-wide lots, I believe, are for the detached homes. The applicant can clarify if I'm incorrect, but yes, they do have the three-foot-wide setbacks unless a greater easement is required.
On all of the attached and detached structures?
Yes, the R-15 district does allow a three-foot-wide setback.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any question, other questions? Would the applicant like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please identify yourself and your address for the record, please, ma'am.
Let's see if I can make sure I know how to work this. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Deborah Nelson. My address is 601 West Bannock Street in Boise. I'm here tonight with the development team for Stapleton subdivision. I think we can skip through some of these items because Sonia has given a really thorough presentation. A couple of items to add to her description of the location that we're really excited about is this property is also located close to Roaring Springs, Wahoos, the Majestic Theater, and a lot of other shopping opportunities that we think great, provide some additional off-site amenities for the residents. It's also close to schools and parks. Here's the detailed site plan. The overall density is 6.73. You can see here the centrally-located large neighborhood park. There's also a lot of passive open space and landscaped areas throughout the development, including nice touches like landscaped endings to each one of these streets, landscaped boulevard parkways coming into each side of the development on the north and the south. We've got three types of residential products. The single-family detached, we've got 116 of these units. These are two stories and range from 1377 square feet to about 1850. The single-family attached, we've got 96 of these units. These are two units attached with a shared wall. They're single-level townhouses, and these will border the existing public streets on both the north and the east and provide a really nice housing product for more mature empty nesters with that single story. In addition, we've got the multifamily townhomes, which are really, you know, vertically-integrated apartment homes because they each have an exterior entrance, and so they really are structured more like townhomes. This is just conceptual at this point. Obviously, we'll have to come back with a conditional use permit for those uses, but there are 28 units there. Similar housing products have been used in numerous developments throughout the city, and with great success, there continues to be high demand for the price point and quality of these homes, as has been seen by the success of those developments, including Solterra and Sovi, Verrato Estates, and Movado Greens. Part of, I think, the success is also driven by the great amenities that these guys always provide in their developments, and Sonia went through this in detail, so I won't spend too much time here. But just to hit a couple of things, this play area that's in this community park is amazing. The fencing to keep everybody safe for toddlers to be in there, the youth soccer field, the half-basketball court, all the play structures. I mean, it's decked out, and it's, it's open to the neighbors to use in the central location helps that. In addition, we've got the regional pathways. With the 10-foot-wide regional pathway being constructed along the Williams Pipeline to the southwest corner and all the way along the east boundary, they are building 1,200 feet of regional pathway with this one small development. That's incredible. If you count all of the open space, not just what counts as qualified open space under the code, the way that staff has counted it, they've got 6.9 acres at 19.3% significant. There's great pedestrian connectivity here. As this slide illustrates, there's more than a dozen access points on all sides of the development. This is going to create great walkability, not just for the residents of Stapleton, but also for the surrounding residents to connect them to the future commercial and mixed uses to the south and to the east. With parking, staff commented that there are some narrower lots. That's, that's also what happens when you have a higher-density development, and if it was even denser, that would be even more concentrated. And yet, these guys have designed this in order to not just meet what's required by code, which is two spaces in garages and two on the driveway, but in addition, their design accommodates at least 109 additional guest spaces on the streets. Phasing, Sonia went through that really well, so I won't go through this, but I just want to highlight that it's, what's amazing about this phasing plan is that with Phase One, even though it's just down here on the southeast corner, they will do all of the Meridian Road improvements with Phase One. Similarly, with Phase Two, even though it's just in this northwest corner, they will do all of the Harris improvements with Phase Two. They will also bring in the entire community park in the center with Phase Two. So they're front-loading the amenities and a lot of the expensive improvements that are going to benefit this neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhood. As Sonia mentioned, staff is asking for a condition of approval that requires a vehicular connection to the west that we have not shown on our plat. We are worried about that connection for a number of reasons. It doesn't fit within the design that we've got here. It also, we're worried about the traffic and parking spilling over from this R-40 zone site from apartment uses to come onto this property. You know, this R-40 site has already been annexed and zoned by the city. That's when it received the R-40 zoning. At that time, the city did not require any connection. Nothing has changed to need that. Their concept plan has private streets, so it, we are still within code for them not to have a connection here. Prior development of this, or approval of this development here was also annexed and zoned. They did not require connection here to this R-40 zone, but they do have connection down here to the east already. Both of them connect up here to Harris, to the Mid Mile Collector, which is the appropriate street to funnel them onto to head east. Providing any kind of shortcut through this development doesn't really help those commuters get to where they need to go any faster than just coming up to the street that should funnel them. We visited with the property owners to the west, which this is the same developer for both projects. They do not need or request full access. All they wanted was emergency access, which we have provided right here. ACHD reviewed this roadway network and approved it, and even provided specific comment on that exact issue about whether there should be vehicular comment, vehicular connection to the west. Kristy Little, in a comment to Sonia sent January 10th, said that if the city requires emergency access, that's fine. Vehicular access for the apartments will need to come through Gray Cliff and Harris Street. ACHD agreed that the prior developments had not been required to provide that connection and that the appropriate place for that higher-density traffic was to go directly to the Mid Mile Collector. A couple of additional transportation items. ACHD and ITD have both reviewed this and offered favorable recommendations and comments. ACHD has approved the plat and the proposed roadways. They have required a 25% contribution to the cost of the signal at Harris, which the developer is in agreement with. That will be paid as soon as the development connects to Harris at that final plat. And if, according to both ITD and ACHD, there will be analysis of whether the signal is warranted beginning at that time and then annually, and as soon as it is warranted, the signal has to be constructed. Neither of those agencies expects the developer to pay more than their fair share, and so if this development ends up having to front it at that time, if that's when the warrants come through, ACHD is going to start a road trust and ensure that other properties in this area contribute to that cost as well. In addition to commenting on the Harris Street signal, ITD has also provided preliminary approval of the access that we have requested on 69, limited, though, not to be full access, but right-in, right-out, left-in. It's preliminary only in the sense that we just need to come forward with construction plans with your standard access agreement with ITD. They, a little history here. ITD has approved this before, as has the city. When Hawkins first came forward in 2012, as Sonia mentioned, with the prior applications for developing both this property and the property to the south, they asked for three access points on Meridian Road. The city approved those through a variance. ITD approved them, and in fact, they were constructed. Then the development did not happen, and the property did not end up annexing into the city. With this development, we have agreed to take out one of the two of those access points that falls within the Stapleton portion of that property, leaving just the access point on the south, and ITD has agreed. They've looked at it again under their current traffic flows and their current safety evaluation, and have decided that access there is appropriate so long as it's limited to those three turning movements. This is an issue that's really presented for council for their decision on the variance and modification we've requested, but I just wanted you to have that additional history of, that we are asking for an access there, but we're also letting one go. That access is important not just for the connectivity and flow of our development, but for the future Hawkins development to the south for commercial uses there. Staff has suggested or requested staggered rear setbacks, not because this is required by code, but because they're worried about the aesthetic appearance of a monotonous wall plane along major roads where you've got a lot of houses backing up to public streets. We actually share that aesthetic concern, and that's why we always build single-story homes along those streets, and so that, that concern here doesn't apply because, given the height that we've already self-restricted all of the rear-facing homes that are along Meridian and Harris, they are, they will be single-story. There won't be that second-story wall that's facing, and given the significant fencing and berm that is required along these streets, you don't see a second-story wall, so it's not an issue here. In fact, from these pictures, you can tell that all you really can see is the contours of the roof line. And given the space limitations, we don't have much to work with to do the staggering, so we ask that that not apply here, given the single-story limitation. So in summary, we did provide a response to the staff report. We've got some items that we are asking to be changed. We're mostly in agreement with the staff's recommendation. We appreciate their recommendation for support. We ask you to also recommend this for approval with just a couple of items to address. We ask that the conditions of approval that were recommended by staff regarding the vehicular connection to the west and the staggered rear setbacks be deleted. And then just a couple of modifications, clarifications on the signal timing. There was some language in the staff report that suggested it had to be done with Phase One. I think Sonia has addressed that in her staff report and presentation tonight, that she understands it'll be with Phase Two and only when warranted, and that's consistent with ACHD's and ITD's conditions of approval. So we just ask that that language reflect as they have recommended that. On the no parking signage, you know, ACHD restricts parking to one side of the street for certain streets within the development. We did look up the fire code language, and it is an "or", so, and it is a residential development, so we would prefer the signage over the red paint on the curb. And given the fire chief's answer to Sonia, maybe the best way to handle this one that we'd ask of you is to say, you know, in accordance with the building code, fire code language, that if it is "and", if that's required, we'll, we have to comply, but if it is "or", we certainly do want to preserve that choice and be able to put more attractive signage up to restrict the parking rather than red curb paint. So I have a handout just with those few items that's on this slide. It's just a printout of this slide, so that if you're in agreement with our request, that you could incorporate those into a motion, and so I'll hand those to you, and then I'd stand for your questions.
Is there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Holland.
Mr. Chair, could we go back to the site plan again, Sonia?
I can, yeah, let's see. I think. Oh, no, but you were overriding me, which is fine. What do you want me to do? You want me to get my hand off of it and you drive?
That slide actually works great.
Okay.
So, one question I've got for you. Just looking at Highway 69, and I know it's a popular road with a lot of people driving on it, and it gets busier and busier every day, similar to Chinon Road, similar to State Street, similar to Eagle Road. I think one of the biggest challenges on the commission is just making sure that we don't create another Eagle Road in the way that we, we plan developments out. And so, in the initial site concept that had come forward, that didn't move forward, there was a collector road that followed the west boundary, kind of a baggage road. Did you look at any other concepts of how a baggage road might integrate better to exit traffic onto Amity further south through the other development that's being proposed to the south of you?
Co-chair people, Commissioner Holland, thanks for your question. With the change in the uses from the prior development, a baggage road wasn't needed to support this level of uses now. That wasn't originally part of the comprehensive plan. That came into, that Master Street map was adopted only in response to the Hawkins original proposal on this property, and so the volumes of traffic we have just don't, don't warrant that. It eats up a lot of the development space with non-fronting houses. And, and I think more importantly, the city has already worked around. importantly, the city has already worked around it, because all of the development approvals that have come into the west have created a different connector between Harris and Amity just west of these developments that you can see here with the Gray Cliff Estates. And so that, there is an opportunity to get down there. You don't need to interrupt the flow of these properties to create yet another one.
One more follow-up question. So, just looking at this, Harris would be a road that would be where the signal would be requested to be at, and then you're also requesting a variance to have the other entrance to the south on this map to be a full access into the property, or this would just be right in, right out on that one?
Commissioner Holland, we initially requested full access, but we're in support of ITD's condition of approval to limit that to three turning movements only, right in, right out, and left in. And as is the case with any access onto a state highway, ITD always holds the cards on when they take that away and require an even more restrictive median. So, in the future, you know, they may determine that a safety warrants right in, right out there. That's their determination.
Thanks.
Mr. Perrow.
Mr. Chair, are you in agreement with the staff's comments if the council does not approve the variance, where they had stated that Phase One, that Phase One would start off Harris Street, or that you would change the phasing plan and submit a new plat and whatnot? Is there agreement from the applicant with that, if council does not approve the variance?
Commissioner Perrow, no, not at this time. That's, we, our design and phasing plan, everything for this development is intending to have that access to the, to the south. It's, as I mentioned, not just critical for our development, but also for the development of the south, to succeed to have mixed use and commercial there. So no, not at this time.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chris, we have...
Mr. Chair, you have several. First is Ronnie Winks.
Thank you for being here. Please state your name and your address for that record, please, ma'am.
Yeah, it's Ronnie Winks, 2172 East Sharp Tail Street in Meridian. And I actually live in the Verado subdivision. And I'm actually a first-time homebuyer, so there's a lot of struggles coming into trying to find a home in my budget for being, you know, college graduate, having two degrees, and then also trying to work as a public employee's payment, pay scale. And so trying to find anything that was a reasonably priced home for a first-time home was ridiculous. And so with this neighborhood, we kind of stumbled upon it, and the first thing we saw when, since I grew up here in Meridian, went to school here in Meridian, left, came back, and so I grew up here, and wanted to move back home here. And the first thing we saw was the park. And so we're like, okay, they're, they're ready. They got their park ready, but now they need homes. So we always saw that when we drive past on Eustick. And with the home, we were starting to look at other developments out in Nampa, because we heard it was cheaper out there. And I'm like, it's Nampa. And so, didn't really want, wasn't feeling quite so great about living out there when my office was moving to the old HP complex. And so looking at different developments, we were looking at CBH homes, tuba homes, we were looking at all these different options. And looking at the prices, the starting price point for some of these homes out in Nampa, just starting, just for the home itself, was around $200,000, plus if you wanted the land, plus you had to pay for the land the house was on, so that was like another $40,000. And then if you want any type of upgrades, it was another like $5,000 to $10,000 per each upgrade that you did. And so it just started piling up and piling up and piling up. And then when we came across this neighborhood, the house, they don't, you don't get to have the choice of like all your colors, but they have these options that's going to come in them, and they're like, okay, this is what's available. But you had everything upgraded. You have stainless steel appliances, you had quartz or granite, so you had everything included, all for this reasonable price, and it would have been the same as the base price of that home out in Nampa, plus the land, and I got all these upgrades included. So I think it's a great, great option, and especially for first-time homebuyers who want something that's got quality, but to stay in Meridian as well. So it's time for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
You said you're a resident of Verado, is that right? Have you seen any concerns regarding the parking or the proximity of the homes to one another, or can you share with us any thoughts on that for our knowledge?
I haven't had any issues, and I actually backed up to the model home too, so I was like, oh, great, I'm not going to have to worry about all these people seeing into my house. Haven't had any issues once I got blinds, didn't have to worry about that. And I'm actually right next to the park, so I have, I'm a little bit on the different side, because I don't have a neighbor to the east, but I will be having a neighbor to the west, because I'm one of them that they're still getting ready for Phase Two. They're working on that, so I'm right at the edge. But I haven't noticed a whole lot of issues. It seems pretty good. And what they do with these homes, if you have these windows that are next to each other, they put in like these kind of privacy-type classes, so that it makes it a little bit better. So I couldn't really tell a whole lot with mine behind me, and it's been great. They take care of the yard maintenance, which is great, because if it's just me, I don't want to sit and mow every week by myself and all that fun stuff, especially if it breaks and I have to call my father, be like, Dad, come help me, you know, do that typical thing, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
Next is Debbie Jesky.
Welcome, ma'am.
Hi.
Please state your name and address for that record, please.
Will do. I am Debbie Jesky. I live at 1886 North Ashandra Avenue in Meridian. I am, I live in Salterra subdivision with my husband. It's a Black Rock home, and I'm here to tell you why it works for us. It, we came from Anchorage, Alaska, and this is exactly what we needed and what we wanted. It is a small home and a small yard, but it's a positive thing. And we even have green space, which we're very happy for. It's a comfortable floor plan, and it's modern finishes, and it is new. Lawn care is taken care of. We have a two-car driveway and a two-car garage. It's walkable. We have sidewalks, we have shade trees, and we even have evening light on the exterior and the front at dusk, so it's also a safety measure. It's attractive, mature landscaping. I think we actually have larger, more mature trees planted in our subdivision than we personally would have planted in our three-bedroom ranch home in Alaska. So we're quite excited about that. It has a mixed play and sports space, very, very similar to what is being proposed, and it is really very, very nice. We do not have any children, but we do walk past it almost every day. We walk the subdivision, we walk many of the subdivisions in the area. We enjoy our subdivision because it is clean, it is compact, but it is also breathable. And we really appreciate everything that we have. We appreciate the quality in the construction. We are in a attached one-story home, so we are in a very comfortable space, a comfortable design, quality features. We also do appreciate, we love the floor plan. It's very bright. We also believe, from what we've seen in the three- and four-bedrooms, that they're also very bright, very well-designed. We appreciate the siding. We, actually, it sounds strange, but we actually do appreciate the siding. We come from a house that was sided with T-111 on three sides, so we can really appreciate the siding. We also appreciate the layout. We actually do appreciate the fact that the one stories back up to one stories and two stories back up to two stories. We also appreciate what we believe is a staggered window placement between each of the units. And we also believe that that carries through with the two-story, as the previous resident had indicated, with some window treatment, some opaque window treatments, and staggered windows. So we really do appreciate that. So I just have to say that it does meet our needs, price-wise and size-wise, and we really enjoy the subdivision, and we enjoy the look. We think it's very attractive. We think it has a nice palette color. We think it has a very nice design, and it's very consistent. And again, like I said before, it is clean, it's very compact, but it's also very breathable for us. And so I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Dennis Green.
My name is Dennis Green, and I live at 2185 East Sharp Tail, also in Verado. And I'll keep my remarks short, but hopefully not redundant. The reason I liked where I live, and I looked at just about every development in Meridian and Eagle, it was very affordable, but I don't want to imply that it was cheap. I have a very nice four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house that's laid out very comfortably. The quality of the construction exceeded all of my expectations. They're very well-built. And one of the areas I'd like to talk about is the clean construction of the area. When you come into Verado, even though there's a lot of houses being built, you won't find any messes anywhere. They go through a great deal of trouble to clean up after themselves, keep the streets clean, keep the sidewalks clean. I personally really appreciate that. My other comment would be, I'd like to, this is very important to me. I found that the builder is a very responsible company, and I'll give you an example. I recently had a couple of adjustments that, of course, you have to make to a new house, a door being loose, and they sent them, and they have a website. All I had to do was fill it out, say what I wanted. It wasn't a day later that they responded, when can we come over? Well, they wanted to come over that day. It didn't work out. The next day they came over, they did the repairs, the guy wasn't happy. He said, I think we can do a better job. I want to bring a carpenter in. The next day the carpenter came. As he was leaving, he said, your front door is just a little bit loose. Let me take care of it for you. So I just really wanted to give the credit to the builder and the way they manage the property and the cleanliness of the property. And lastly, we talked about affordability for young people getting started. I'd say half my neighbors are senior citizens. They moved out of their big houses, like I did, into something that's very comfortable and affordable. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brandon Whalen. Andrew Newland. I'm sorry, Brandon.
Sorry, we skipped you. I'm just joking. Just, you can beat on me later.
No worries. Madam Chair, members of the Meridian Planning Commission, my name is Brandon Whalen. I'm with Hawkins Companies in Boise, Idaho, address of 855 West Broad Street, Boise, Boise, Idaho. I just wanted to say that Hawkins Companies purchased this land, and we entered into a pretty brisk entitlement process with staff. We had that whole mixed-use plan set in place. We had an anchor that was very interested in being located between south Meridian and Kuna. The mid-boxes were looking to follow, and so we had everything falling into place. We were working with staff. They were really happy with the site plan that we were working on. We had retail, office, multifamily component, so everything was looking good. And so we purchased the land, and one of the key items that I think is important for this discussion is the land that we purchased. They had deeds that were attached to them, that when ITD widened that highway back in the early '80s, instead of paying the landowners for the right-of-way taking for the widening of the road, they just conveyed a, an access point. ITD would guarantee you an access point through that, through your property. So when we purchased the property, we were purchasing 11 access points, or, excuse me, seven access points as well. Well, so then we were working through the site planning process, the development agreement with the City of Meridian, and then we were showing three access points to 69, saying, hey, we bought seven, but we'll relinquish four of them and keep the three. And that really stalled the process, because we couldn't get to an agreement with staff, planning commission denied, then we had to appeal, and then we ended up having to go to the court system, and finally, it was decided that three access points would be allowed. ITD approved that variance, and then we went before City of Meridian. They also approved that variance. And so we moved forward, or wanted to move forward, but at that point in time, we had lost our major anchor. The entitlement process was taking too long, and they needed to move forward with the store, and so they went to another location. And so by that time, we've, you know, our entitlement process had lengthened out. We'd lost our anchor. And then during this time, the actual, the whole entire retail sector kind of got flipped upside down. And so we still have a lot of interest in that property. We have great plans for it. We want it to be that regional mixed-use development that we've always thought and the city thought it would be. But, you know, we're going to have to really think hard on how we're going to use our property. But one of the key things that our success of having a regional mixed-use development from the Stapleton project going south to Amity, well, we will need access. And so that access point staying there, not only is a benefit and requirement for Stapleton, but for our continued success or possibility of having a mixed-use center, we still need that access point. So respectfully, I ask that you approve subdivision H 2018-0129 with specific reference to the previous variance approvals that have been provided by ITD and the City of Meridian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
I feel like the information that you're sharing is really important for us to hear. The history is really helpful. So is there anything else? Would it be okay with the commission if we allow him to finish? Anything else you might need to say?
I just, I do appreciate the discussion, the staff presentation, and also the application that has been submitted by Stapleton. This is something, like I said, we had purchased when we had anchor interest, and we were going through the entitlement process, and we thought we had kind of a slam dunk on the access points, and that stalled us, and it was an abrupt stop. And so as we went through that process, you know, the economic downturn was kind of coming out of it. Retailers were then kind of downsizing, and so the layout and what we had planned, you know, had all changed. And the shops were going to be smaller, the anchors, everything changed. And so then we had to look at what other options might be. And we always knew there was going to be a residential component to our mixed-use development. And so we thought the Stapleton purchase and development of a highly, a very densely, single-family and mixed housing product would be a good complement to our retail mixed-use development right next door. But for that to be successful, that access point that we negotiated with ITD and the City of Meridian, it is crucial for us to have an opportunity to get those tenants back onto the property and get the intensity that we envisioned on that property.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Perrow.
Am I to understand correctly that all that property to the south is still owned by Hawkins, and Hawkins tends to develop the potential retail and commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
In that location? Okay.
That is correct.
And you have, how many access points do you have on Amity? Do you have two, or just one?
There were three between Harris and, oh, excuse me, on Amity.
On Amity, going south.
I think we had, we had two.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Andrew Newland.
I'm Andrew Newland. I live at 2166 East Ringneck Street, and that's in the Verado subdivision. I'm also a realtor in the area, so I just want to talk to you a little bit about my opinion and the need for a product like this. In the last 12 months, I've sold four properties in the Verado subdivision, a very good variety of the type of property and home as well. I've sold the townhomes, the two-story homes, and as well as the single-level detached home. I've sold from first-time homebuyers to a client that's retiring in, you know, a week from now. So it really speaks to the need and the fit for not just first-time homebuyers, but an array of everyone, in that there's a product in this neighborhood and this development that really can hit a lot of different demographics and age requirements as well. and age requirements as well. The other thing I want to talk about is how much it's a needed alternative to affordable new construction. As you heard one of the others speak about, looking at, you know, CBH Homes in Nampa and being able to find something here in Meridian as well. There's so few affordable new home builders. And having something that Black Rock is able to do to really fit a need for the community is very important. You've also heard about how clean it is and how great the green space is in the parks. And they're also used very often as well. I live very close to the park in the Verrato subdivision. And when the weather permits, it seems like there's always someone out there either shooting hoops or kids running around the little racetrack there. Really fun to see and nice to see that those spaces are being used. You've heard they do top-notch work. They really do. And I think that's really about all I have to take up your time for. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Randy Nelson?
Ms. Nelson?
My name's Randy Nelson. I live at 1873 North Marnita in Solterra Community. And the redundancy was going to have to be here. But the idea that when we came up here two years ago looking for a place to retire and we looked all over this valley and we saw things that weren't going to make it and the added cost for fences and backyards and things were, it just took us out of our price range. And if I tell a fast story short, my wife had to go back home and I kept looking and we came across the Solterra community. And just driving down the first street, it's still got construction, but the one gentleman said, "They keep up the construction, so it's not a mess." And the house, the Dillmore's, I meet Will out in the street. He's busy as can be. He's the onsite realtor. He tosses me the keys, "Go look at that one over there if you want to." And it just turned out to be already done, already in. The granite matched the bathrooms, matched the ceiling, I mean, had ceiling fans. It had everything about the house and the quality. We were in an attached, single-story. It fits everything. It's the biggest little three-bedroom home. My wife says more storage than homes we've had in the past. So everything about this builder that we can see has done all the details. We have a patio cement in the backyard. We lived in Las Vegas and they gave you three-by-three and say, "Have fun with that." And, you know, we have 16 by 12 or 16 by 14. We've put a cover over it. And we have additional space out in the backyard in this nice little patio home that works so well for us to retire here and have somebody do the yard. And we can lock up and everybody knows everybody. We live behind the lady that came up to speak, the siding. Everything about this is just the perfect home. It's well-built. They do try, they do care. The response time for the new home fixings, no complaints whatsoever. They had good staff. So I'm just, I endorse it completely. We can't believe how well they've done up here. Las Vegas was put to shame with, you know, low 200s. Everything done, you can't beat it. And so I just, I wanted to make sure I could come up and say the same thing because we're very happy up here.
We appreciate it. Thank you, sir, very much.
Will Dillmore?
Will Dillmore, 1979 North Lucas Grove Road, Meridian. I've been a realtor in the area for 25 years. Worked with Black Rock Group for 20-plus years or almost 20 years. Stapleton will be the fifth project in Meridian with this housing style. All four previous neighborhoods have been extremely successful and sold out in record time. The goal at these communities is to offer affordability. They have succeeded in meeting that need with this housing product, as you've heard. Verrato is a similar neighborhood to Stapleton. In 2018, it was a top-selling new construction community in Meridian under 300,000 with 49 sales. Currently, in all of Meridian, there are only 54 actual finished new construction homes available under 300,000 and another 41 used homes available. That's less than one month's worth of inventory. I believe Black Rock is succeeding with this housing style for two key reasons. Number one, buyers recognize the value of these homes. They offer a high-quality, compact, low-maintenance, carefully-planned development. Black Rock can do this because of their unique designs and carefully-planned layouts, allowing them to buy more expensive land that is closer into town while passing lower prices on to the buyers. The landscape and fencing is always included, so everything is complete when the buyer moves in. Number two, these homes meet a price point that the average Meridian household can afford. Per the city stats on the Chamber of Commerce's website, the average Meridian household makes just over 62,000 per year. That average household income can generally afford to purchase a home priced between 260,000 and 295,000. Stapleton's housing product is expected to meet that price point. This housing style and neighborhood may not fit your personal needs or demographic, but it may meet the needs of someone in your family. Maybe your son or daughter who just recently graduated from college or got married and wants to stay in Meridian. Or your brother or sister who's recently divorced, trying desperately to try to stay within the Meridian area to keep their school, their kids in the same school district, just to give them some stability. Or your mom who has recently widowed, downsizing from the big home, looking for something that's more affordable, easy to care for, with nice finishes. I have personally worked with each one of these demographics in these neighborhoods. And I believe that the Stapleton product will meet each one of these demographics and demands. That's it. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Will.
Brittany Elliott?
I'm Brittany Elliott, 2277 East Camay Drive. I actually live in the Verrato subdivision as well. I am, I guess, meeting a different demographic. I am recently divorced. So I have two small children, single mother, work full-time. This subdivision really spoke to me because I don't have time to come home and do the lawn and take care of everything. And I just recently moved in and they've been awesome to work with. They were very fast in getting me into the house. And I just really appreciate everything they've done for me. And I know that a lot of other people really like it too, so.
Thank you very much.
There were no additional sign-ins?
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify on this application? Please come forward, ma'am. Hi. Welcome to the commission. Please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
I'm Carol Daly and I live at 2192 East Camay Drive in Verrato. I'm the one that's retiring in a week and he sold me my house. So I found my house like in the nick of time because I am retiring. You know how hard it is to buy a house after you don't have a job anymore? I looked off and on for five or eight years for a house to trade my house for within about the same price range. I'd just about given up when I found Verrato. Okay, now I'm getting really nervous. I had a corner lot with an unattached garage slash shop. So I had the big yard. And when it snowed, I had three-car driveway and all that sidewalk to shovel. I just can't do the work anymore. So I was basically looking to downsize. There were a few beat-up old crappy houses in my price range and I wanted a house that was at least as nice as the one I lived in and took care of and loved for 28 years. I found that with Verrato and Black Rock. My new home is affordable and beautiful and there's almost no maintenance for me to worry about. And I have amazing finishes that I only dreamed of. I have to believe that there's dozens or hundreds of people like me in the Boise and Meridian area, kind of old and retiring. And I can't do the work anymore. These houses are perfect for people like me. I'd just about given up on this dream when I found Black Rock and Verrato. Thanks.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that would like to testify? Would the applicant like to come back and close the discussion? Or do you have anything else to add, ma'am? Anyone else have, yes, ma'am.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Perau.
I'm on a roll tonight.
You're not having a voice. You're talking a lot.
I know. I wasn't supposed to. Okay, my question is regarding the request of the items to be modified, number three on page 15 of the staff report. And on that page, it says, "Per the applicant's narrative, the following improvements are proposed to each phase." And in Phase Two, it says that the applicant had proposed the installation of the traffic signal in Phase Two. So I would just want a clarification from you. The staff had stated that that was in the written narrative provided by the applicant that they would agree to the installation of the traffic signal in Phase Two. So has something changed since the application was submitted?
Commissioners, yes. Nothing had been discussed yet in enough detail with ITD and ACHD. The agencies indicated that a signal is not warranted and so cannot be constructed until it is warranted. Also, we did ask to make sure that we were only being required to build what was necessary for our proportionate share and the agencies agreed. And so it is still going to be done as soon as it is warranted and that requirement is triggered with our connection to Harris. So the timing is still there once it's warranted. And it begins with that first final plat, phase that touches Harris. So that is still true.
And you're putting your funding in for the road trust to be able to pay that 25%, correct?
Commissioners, that is correct. So even if it's not warranted yet, upon that Phase Two final plat, we have to go ahead and provide our 25% of the signal into a road trust then. And then ACHD will collect all of the funds for the road trust so that if it's not warranted during our development, we are still on the hook for our share. And then they will work with the other developers to build the signal.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Holland?
Just one more clarification question. So the variance you're requesting is for the access that's on the southern portion, right? For that full access, not for the Harris Street? Just to make sure I'm asking.
Commissioners, Commissioner Holland, that's correct. The variance is just for that one access point that we're asking to retain on the southern part of our property onto 69. There's no variance needed at Harris.
One more follow-up question.
Absolutely.
How many units are coming in with the first phase on that variance request? I know we don't decide the variance, but just so we kind of know on the phasing.
I have that in here. Hang on just a second. I just, there's not a fast, okay. Phase one, 52 units.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Perau.
Staff had mentioned that the fire department would like to keep the requirement for the parking signs and the curb painting. Can you share your thoughts on that?
Commissioner Perau, I appreciate the opportunity too. We would just ask you to modify that condition to say as required by the fire code and the building code. So that in case the fire chief was mistaken on that being an and or an or, we can provide the necessary signs, but not paint the curb red.
You're willing to do one or the other, but would you rather not?
We're willing to comply with the code, absolutely.
Paint the curb. Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Seal, are you good?
I am good, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I get it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move we close the public hearing for Stapleton subdivision H-2018-0129.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2018-0129. Staples and subdivision, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post thing. Motion passes. The application is properly before you, commissioners. Who wants to lead off?
Led off the last two times.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Seal?
I appreciate all the testimony and, I mean, you know, with people that fit the demographic of affordable, you know, quality home construction, I'm glad to see something like this that's out there and available. About the only concern that I have on this is the request for the variance to allow for, you know, basically a variance outside of what ITD is accepting at this point, which is, you know, all access to come in and out off of the highway. And, I mean, we had touched on it before as far as, you know, we don't want to create another Eagle Road, basically. So, and I think allowing that variance would send us in that direction on this, where we're already going to have something that comes in on Harris. Allowing people to go in and out in all directions is, you know, something that would be a safety concern for sure and probably point us in that direction where we don't want to go, which is, you know, building something like an Eagle Road again.
I, my only comment to that is for it to be a truly mixed-use regional development, that commercial use is going to have to have an access. I mean, I think it's almost impossible for them to not, I mean, to bring it up to the midpoint. And I think what ITD will do is they'll say right-in, right-out and then they'll take it away the left turn in. So that it'll only be right-in, right-out at the base of their subdivision. Give them another access. It's not our decision anyway.
Right.
It's the, I think the city council will make that decision. But I think the challenge I think, and I appreciate the folks from Hawkins being here to give us some history, I think with there being legal precedent on this too, I think it's challenging for me to hop in the mix and say that's not going to happen. But I have a tough time saying that having a viable commercial entity there and not having access to the highway will be challenging. But I don't think that's our call unless you all want it to be. I, to what Commissioner Holland said, I think, and I will lean to my realtor to the right and to my lovely wife who sell these things, zero-lot line product and these types of products are necessary right now. There is not enough product at this price point in this valley. And it sounds, I appreciate the folks from these subdivisions or these neighborhoods coming to talk to us about what they're seeing in their neighborhoods. Because I think they are, I appreciate they're letting us know they're building a good product and hitting a certain group that needs to be served. And I, so I appreciate that. And I think this is where it fits. It's on a state highway. It's less dense than it would have been with the current, with what was being brought forward first. And so I think it's the right spot. There's certainty in there for the people around them. Across the street is, I think, chicken coop slash storage units. So I think if we're, and I think this is the right place for it. So just my thought.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Perau.
I have several thoughts and then a question for staff, so please bear with me. Yes, as an associate real estate broker in this valley, there is a definite need for affordable housing and offices in downtown Meridian. So we're selling here frequently. So it always makes us happy to see when there's additional housing options that are added. So as far as the, as far as the, I wanted to speak to the open space and the landscaping and address that because it is in the staff report. And the staff report talks about that there are sections that the staff doesn't really consider to be qualified in the open space. I wanted to know if the, if my fellow commissioners had any other, had any concerns about that. After looking at everything that the staff had laid out, it still looks to me like there probably is sufficient open space. So I wanted to ask that question before you respond. I also wanted to ask the staff, in the staff recommendation, on the, in the staff presentation on the summary here, I want a clarification where you had said denial of the variant, you're recommending denial of the variance. And then you recommend a change to the DA provision, number 1F, requiring a local street connection. Are those two things tied together?
Madam Chair, they are not tied together.
Is that all part of the variance decision?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the variance, staff has recommended denial of. The other change was just a slight modification based on code that staff saw after the report went out, that it does specifically require a local street connection rather than just a vehicular connection as the condition currently states.
So the UDC currently requires that street connection?
Yes.
And so how do we, I mean, are we permitted to not require that as a, or to not recommend that that be required to city council?
I would defer to legal on that.
Okay.
It is a code requirement.
Let us understand how that would work, or how we should go about.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was paying attention.
Sorry, your mic's off, Andrea.
Can you repeat the question?
Madam Chair, if I may, the UDC requires a local street connection to be provided to adjacent, let me bring the code up specifically and I'll read you exactly what it says.
So we do have a local connection to the south, right?
So all subdivisions must provide a local street access to any use that currently takes direct access from an arterial or collector street. The adjacent property to the west will take access from the collector street, Harris Street. It has no other public street access. So that's the reason that staff is requiring a vehicular connection. And I just explained to the commission that currently the condition reads a vehicular connection should be provided. I asked for the commission to change the wording on that to require a local street connection per UDC eleven-three-A-three-A-three. They wanted to know if they can not require that.
So as Sonya just indicated, that the code requirement applies.
Okay, so there isn't any discussion for us to have, it just, that is what it is, okay. I wanted to understand that, thank you. So I think that's just about everything that I had initial questions or thoughts on. So curious the commissioner, my commissioners. Or should we have discussion on the landscaping?
I'm okay to have a discussion on.
I shouldn't say open space.
I'm okay with the open space due, I think, we're not, they weren't counting that, I think the applicant said nineteen percent. And as we take out the things that the staff doesn't count, we get down to that thirteen point nine. It's above the ten percent. I think that park place in the middle provides that center point. And I, it's, the walking areas, I think, is awesome. I think the balance point there is, you know, especially if you have a retired community, you have a place for the parks for kids to play inside and you have lots of walking areas for the folks, but that's just my thought. In regards to code versus whatever, I think tying a fourplex, which has to come in for a conditional use permit into an apartment complex is an awful idea. So I, whatever code says, I understand that, but that's, I think that makes no sense. So I, I think that's a train wreck at that intersection waiting to happen. So I'm not sure how to state that and then I can't make a motion, so. But I think that, for city council to read my comments, I think that is an awful concept. So, love my staff members, but I don't think that's a good idea.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So then, in that regard, are you saying you would not, that you don't like the idea of multifamily anywhere in this?
No, I think the fourplex units that have to come in, and we're talking about a local connector up there, where there's an emergency access, it's baller, it's access. We have a local street access down to the south that tries into Grayland. But I don't think having an apart, there's several, I can't remember how many units. We're talking about a hundred units or over a hundred units of apartment complex.
In the R forty.
In the R forty to the south, going up through a fourplex community tying into Harris. I just think that's an awful idea. So that's just my thoughts. So, the council can do what they want in that situation. But if we don't have an access, ability to say anything, they have that ability to change it if they want. Commissioner Perrow, do you have any comments?
No, I just am, I'm trying to understand, is it a matter of the look? Or is it, because the two wouldn't be connected.
So Sonya, can you bring that up?
It's not a traffic concern, it's the actual.
It is a traffic concern, actually.
What is, okay.
So can you bring up the Grayland exhibit that you have on there? That shows the other neighborhood next to it? So this is all, that section in the first part is all apartment. That's all attached, or I mean, it's apartment complexes, if I'm correct, right, Sonya? You're dumping that into the middle of a fourplex community.
Madam Chair, commissioners, the property is zoned R forty. If I remember right, though, the Gray Cliff Estates originally came in with a preliminary plat and they showed a, and a development agreement, and they showed a concept plan that looked like that, or similar to that. They did come back in and re-subdivide the property within the last couple of years, though. And I, I'm pretty sure that with the development agreement, that time, they did not show a concept plan on the R forty zone portion. So I, I'm not entirely sure how that will develop in the future, if it will be like it's shown or if it'll be different. They will be required to come back and do a conditional use permit, though, regardless.
We do have a local connection down to the south. Correct, I mean, going into the Hawkins property to the south. So, is that not meet code?
The reason for the code, honestly, staff's fine with a vehicular connection. Staff does believe there should be a vehicular connection. The reason being so that folks over here don't have to go out of their development, back onto the collector street, out and into this development, so they can, they're interconnected. Comprehensive plan speaks to interconnectivity between developments, you know. But, having said that, the code specifically requires a local street connection to properties that have access from a collector street. This property here only has access from a collector street. So that's the reason for the code requirement. Council and legal can look at that more. At council, I don't have a problem, I'm certainly willing to forward, if commission doesn't feel there should be a connection, forward that recommendation.
I think there, an emergency access makes total sense there. But having a, if that literally develops as an apartment complex, I mean, it's almost dumping into an apartment complex parking lot. I mean, I'm sorry, a fourplex parking lot, that, I mean, that just seems challenging.
If it's a local street connection, it wouldn't be through the parking.
I understand that, I get that. I, it just seems like a challenge. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Commissioner Holland, sorry, I'll get off my soapbox now.
I just wanted to go back to your earlier comment about the open space. There was a note underneath the picture that said it was revised per the staff report recommendations. So I think we've kind of already covered that, but I think they've offered a lot of good amenities. I like the walking pass around it. I, when we're looking at mixed use, we certainly can't tie Hawkins to their development plan there because they haven't attracted tenants and we don't know what it's going to become. But I like the ability to have denser population next to centers like that where they can walk, go get groceries if we get a grocery store there, go get clothes, whatever it is that comes in there. So I think that's a good fit there. I would agree, we heard a lot of residents talk about how nice their facilities are. They've got a good reputation, Black Rock does, for quality construction with the upgrades. There's a need for variety of housing. I know, I just looked at the stats from twenty eighteen, average prices of homes sold in Ada County and of new construction, and it was three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand for new construction, average. So certainly having a housing product that's between the two-hundred-to-three-hundred-thousand range would be attractive for the community. I also like that they didn't do a typical multifamily type project, but it's more of a townhome feel, because I think it looks more attractive. I agree completely with your comment that I'd rather see just an emergency access through that because it's always tough when you go through a multifamily complex into a bigger multifamily complex and you've just got a lot of traffic going through there. So that's a challenge I agree with. I had one other comment, but I've lost my train of thought, so. Commissioner Perrow, I know you had something to say.
Mr. Chair, no, I'm losing my train of thought too, and so I apologize that I'm stumbling over my words right now. But it is my understanding that even though maybe there's a preference for just the emergency access, we can't change the UDC. And so it sounds like that there won't be another option for the applicant but to amend the plan to include that local street connection.
I think my comment there would be to work with, have staff work before council to figure out something that's going to work there. Because I, and I think council can look at the picture and say, okay, we know it's coming or we don't, and let's figure out a different way to do this. But I also think, and I'm not sure how you read it, but there is a local connection down south on the Hawkins property that does meet code. So, yeah, it'll be in a gray area, but we'll, I'll let you guys work that out, at least in my opinion.
If I could clarify something, just looking at the code a little bit closer. I'm sure that applicant will be happy for me to clarify. So looking at the beginning of that section of code, you always have to look at more than just the, you know, some of the provisions. So the preceding comments on the code standard says, "The following standards shall apply unless otherwise waived by council." So there is a provision for a waiver in there. So with that, staff will withdraw the request for a local street connection, but will stand with the vehicular connection. But you can certainly make a recommendation to council on that, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Perrow, did you want an additional comment?
Mr. Chair, no, I'm very glad, though, that we
Thank you.
that we got that addressed, because that's pretty significant.
I appreciate you kicking the soapbox out from under me. Commissioner Seal, did you have any additional comments?
I did, I just, I wanted to go back to the variance and I want to basically better understand that. So exactly what is being requested and what staff basically said. They recommended denial of it. So I just want to understand exactly the variance that's being asked for and the what would be denied.
Sonya, can you walk through that? What variance are you?
And I guess I'm just, I'm thinking about the traffic on the highway itself. And I understand that there's going to be other things that go in there, but for a subdivision to go in there, and just thinking of safety, because you're going to have, you know, if you've got fifty-some residents that are in there, you're talking fifty to a hundred cars coming in and out of there on a daily basis. So I just want to make sure that I understand what that variance is, that has been requested, and if it's denied, what is denied? Is it like denies access to Highway sixty-nine altogether? Or it just, is it going to go with just what ITD recommended, which is right in, right in, right in, right out, left in?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. The variance is specifically for access to the state highway. It is at the quarter-mile section. Our UDC specifically prohibits access other than at the half-mile on state highways. So in order to grant a variance, there's three findings that they have to make, and that is included in your notes there. Anytime we allow accesses to state highways, it erupts the flow of the highway and it creates safety hazards for folks, especially when you have a full access or a left-in, left-out. You know, you have cars, you know, crossing traffic at high rates of speed, fifty-five miles an hour. So police department had definite, definite concerns with that, and they did not want the left-in access, even if the right-in, right-out's approved. Staff doesn't, you know, necessarily have as much of an issue with the right-in, right-out if it is designed for ITD standards with D cell and S cell lanes. However, our code does prohibit it, so staff can't support the variance. If council supports it, they will have to make those findings for approval of the variance. And those, if you'd like me to go through those real quick, I can. It's, it's... Where's that? So the variance can't grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the district. The variance relieves an undue hardship because of characteristics of the site and the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So they have to be able to make all three of those findings in order to grant a variance. So if they deny the variance, then there will be no access to the state highway.
My question becomes, how does historic findings and how does historic agreements come into play here? If you had, I mean, that's a done issue, because there were three.
The city's concerned. That approval for access went away with that annexation. They lost their
Okay.
approval for access with the city. ITD's a different matter, you know, they, I'm not sure legally what they have with that, but they didn't, they chose not to sign their development agreement. So everything that went with that approval went away.
At the city, but not necessarily at ITD.
Yes. They need approval from the city and ITD for any access to the state highways.
Mr. Chair, if I could also direct you to the UDC eleven-three-H, development along federal and state highways, which we're talking about. The code does allow that while staff shall review all development applications for compliance with these standards, and they're saying they aren't met, the right-in, right-out, left-out, the decision-making body, which will be city council, may consider and apply modifications to the standards of the article upon specific recommendation of the Idaho Transportation Department. So they've submitted a variance application, which city council will consider. But according to the UDC, city council also has the authority, given the specific approval from ITD, to consider waiving the standards and approving it.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for that clarification. I think that will make a significant difference for us. And maybe the applicant will breathe a little more sigh of relief. Thank you very much for.
Commissioner Seal, did I answer your question?
I did, thank you.
Any other additional comments or thoughts?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few additional thoughts.
Commissioner Holland, go for it.
Can we flip back to the Gray Cliff matchup too? I know that was on the other presentation, but sorry to make you keep flipping back and forth. So looking at where the Collector Road is, does that Collector Road that's on there right now that connects down to Amity, does that road go through right now, or is that something that's to be constructed in the future?
Madam Chair, I don't believe it goes, I'm not sure if it's been constructed yet or not, but I don't believe it goes clear through to Amity if it has. There's some development property between there and Amity that's yet to develop.
One other thought I had, just looking at the way that the phasing of the plot lays out, and I don't know if the applicant would even be open to this, but the challenges, the number of ITD access points for me, too. I worry about having two access points because I read somewhere in the report that there were eleven accidents somewhere in the last six months and sixty percent of those were injury accidents. There was something in the report about that. So it is concerning to see people, and I know if they restrict the left-out onto Meridian, that helps a little bit. But the left end of the neighborhood still worries me a little bit. I just don't like seeing injury accidents on that highway if we can avoid it. But I was wondering if the applicant might be interested in flipping the phasing and doing Phase Two first, which has the park in it, which would also have that amenity there for the first residents that move in, just as a thought. Again, I like the development project, I think it's, it looks like a well-laid-out plan. I like that they've got single-family on the perimeter, I think that makes a lot of sense. And with that, I'll just go back through these notes, we can go back and talk about it, too. I think we could strike the condition about the monotonous wall planes because I think what they're saying makes sense, that it's going to be single-family with the stone wall. I don't have a concern with needing to change the wall planes on those. Signal timing, I don't have a huge concern with it, as long as ITD, you know, works with the applicant when there's a need to have that signaled light there. But if we had two access points, I'd almost like to see the second access point, the one that they're requesting a variance for, come in when Hawkins Companies comes forward with their development, because I think that would make more sense timing-wise. That was my only thought there. Sorry, that's a lot there.
The one further south?
Yep.
Turn your mic on, please.
If that's something that, I completely agree with that. If that's something that could be, you know, brought into the plan or they would be amenable to doing Phase Two first, then the timing of this would make a lot more sense, especially for asking for that variance, especially if there's going to be further development in the southern portion of this. So, again, you know, trying to make sure that, you know, this development is going to be successful, but at the same time, trying to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe as we can with the power that we're afforded is, you know, that makes sense to me as well. Just trying to bring that second phase in first. And it provides for the park as well, so.
While you're going to the list, do you have a problem or concerns or thoughts on number four?
I think my thought on number four would just be that they would work with the fire department to come up with what's amenable for what the fire department needs. So if the fire department comes back and says, "We really like the red painted curbs," that they would just work with the fire department, I think they can figure that out.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Holland.
Do we want to reopen the public hearing so we can hear from the applicant on swapping?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do we want to reopen the public hearing so we can talk to the applicant about phasing? Swapping phases? Do we want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Holland.
I move we reopen the public hearing for Stapleton subdivision H dash twenty-eighteen dash zero-one-two-nine to hear from the applicant as a clarification about phasing.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second to reopen the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed name. Welcome back.
Members of the commission, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to weigh in, but at this time, no, we're not interested in readjusting the phasing because that access remains critical to the development. So, delay- So delaying, it doesn't change the need for it. We need to proceed with the applications we have presented, and it isn't just a variance we've asked for. We actually have requested a modification, because we think that provides the easier standards for the City Council. They don't have to meet the variance standards that Sonya read to waive that requirement. It's plainly stated, as the city attorney noted. So we think that ITD has already looked at that safety record there, and that's exactly why the code allows a modification with an ITD recommendation. So we still are going to ask Council to approve that modification. We do want that access point, we need it, and so that's the phasing that works best with that access. It doesn't work to have Hawkins develop it, because it's on our property, and because if we had to wait for that, we couldn't actually build out the development as planned, because we don't know what their timing is. But I mean, I appreciate you trying to work with it, so don't let my no be unappreciative, but it just isn't going to work for what we've got planned.
Commissioner Holland.
Mr. Chair, just one more follow-up question. Do you have any indication on what the timing would look like between Phase One and Two on development? How the timing of those phases would play out?
My understanding, and you guys can nod or shake your head, is that it's about once per year, right? Each come in? Okay, the, one per season. So quickly.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
Can you share more about the multifamily? Is that going to be owned by an individual owner/investor? Are those going to be platted with lots that are going to be sold separately? Is it going to be a separate or subset of the overall HOA, managed differently? Is the same HOA going to manage all of it? Can you talk to us about that?
Commissioners, I'll take a stab at it, and you guys jump up if I don't say something you want. Okay. It is on a single lot, so it won't be replatted. It is platted as a single lot now with this development. Single owner is what I'm being told, and so you'll have some integrity of ownership and subject to the CCNRs. And, you know, appreciate the comments and discussion about whether it makes sense to put a roadway there. Of course, we certainly agree with the comments that it doesn't. And would remind you guys that there is an opportunity. This Graycliff Estates is not yet built and is developed by all one party. So the local road access can be put between those two developments. The R-40 and the Graycliff Estates that's platted to the south, they already have an opportunity to put their own local road in. The city didn't require it, doesn't mean they can't do it. So that, it's yet another reason why it doesn't make sense to burden this development with it. It doesn't even add anything practically to cut off that little corner, so it doesn't meet the needs. But anyway, we appreciate your recommendation on that and your comments on that to the council as well.
And you have to come back for a CUP on that multifamily either anyway, correct?
Commissioners, that's correct. We will be back for a CUP on that apartment area.
Any additional questions?
I don't think so. We really appreciate your patience with us getting this figured out.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Bill. Bill has comments.
I just want to remind you of your responsibility tonight. So keep in mind, I appreciate you opening up the public testimony and asking the applicant what their preference is, but you, as a body, can recommend them changing their phasing plan. You, as a body, can recommend that the park happen with the first phase. So I don't want you to lose sight of that. That's something, if they don't agree with, they can certainly take up that change with the City Council as we go through the hearing process. Also, just for looking at the Graycliff Estates Development Agreement that was redone back in eighteen, although there wasn't a concept plan tied to that plat, there was a condition or provision in the development agreement that requires the multifamily to have an access to Harris Street, which is a good thing, because it is going to be two-hundred-plus units at some point. But there was also a condition in there to have connectivity with the adjacent uses in the area. So although it's not one-hundred percent set in stone for this project, it was noted, and it is tied in that development agreement. So even though it comes through this one, or goes through Graycliff, we've got to get some connectivity, as Sonya mentioned. So just keep that in mind as you deliberate. So again, you have the ability to require phasing to be changed, you have the ability to require certain amenities at a certain phase. And don't lose sight, I mean, even though the variance does come down to council's discretion, ITD's always been supportive of the city's decision. So if, we were at a pre-op the other day, and they said, "Whatever the city wants, we would support that position." So I don't want anyone to lose sight, just because one agency says yes, doesn't mean the city has to say yes. The other thing is with the light at Harris. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion about that, but from good planning practices and knowing what that, the traffic on that roadway, if that access is approved to Meridian Road, I believe the, it's my professional opinion that that light should go in with the first phase of this development, because that's going to minimize conflicts. You're going to be able to control the intersection and have traffic going and out of that, right in, right out. ACHD has deferred to ITD on when that traffic signal is warranted. But again, if that's something that you would like to see, that's a recommendation you can make to City Council, that the applicant put in that signal with either first phase or second phase. So just something to-
Does Graycliff have any buy-in on that, too?
All of those, there's a lot of lots, there's over five-hundred homes approved in that area of lots, and all of them are going to have to update traffic studies and provide that information to ACHD and ITD as those homes come online. So it's a timing issue. It's whoever goes first, who moves first, and when the homes get built.
So Graycliff's already been approved, correct?
It's been, yeah.
So they weren't required to bring a-
Well, they get all the same conditions.
No, I understand what they were-
Road trust.
So that, I get that. So I guess, it's a matter of, it's a matter of latecomers, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, you pay into that pot, and when it's warranted, then it gets installed, as you know. So I'll leave that up to you. That's all I wanted to comment on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so to be clear, that if we recommend that the light be put in in Phase One or Phase Two, does that increase the cost to the applicant significantly? Because then the road trust is not necessary, and basically, they're contributing twenty-five percent, is my understanding.
Yeah, Commissioners, yeah, it does. It's a significant cost to put in a signal, and a lot of right-of-way to get looked at as well, so it's something to take into consideration. But again, you're trying to weigh the public interest and public safety, and our police department says they don't like that access point, but they're willing to concede with a right-in, right-out. So if that helps alleviate some of that concern, that's within your purview. I can also tell you, when Graycliff Estates came through the second time, Commission and Council, and Mayor and the Council did talk about the improvements to Harris needing to happen sooner rather than later, and this applicant's proposing to do that at Phase Two. So just something to take into consideration, just to give you some of that history and context, too.
Thank you.
Sonya, I'm going to ask one random question. There's no D-cell or X-cell lane that has been proposed along there, has, is there? I didn't read that. There is?
Commissioners, yeah, that will be part of the mitigation requirements from ITD as they analyze the traffic study.
So D-cell and X-cell, both? You're going to have both? Okay. Thank you.
That helps me a little bit on the safety side.
So would we like to close the public hearing again? Or do something else?
Do we want to finish deliberating while it's open, in case we have any other questions that pop up?
It is absolutely up to the Commission. That is definitely warranted, if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Holland.
I still would like to see Phase Two probably develop before Phase One, and I know that's not the applicant's desire, for the reason of safety, that I think having people funnel through Harris and having Harris be an improved intersection, especially with a number of homes being developed in that area, whether they partner with Graycliff, or whether they partner with others to make that happen, I think that would be something I'd be interested in seeing. I'm not opposed to them having the second access point. I'd prefer it to be a right-in, right-out type of situation, but if they needed to build that second access point, in addition to have their roadway kind of funnel through both ways, even if their Phase One, as it's listed on here, doesn't develop right away, does that make sense what I'm saying? If the roadway could go through, if they built the road for Phase One and Phase Two together, so they'd have that access point still, but developed Phase Two first? Doesn't make sense what I'm saying.
I'm trying to catch there, but I'm not-
If they're really interested in having that access point come in, and they would be willing to develop Phase Two first, but they could still build the roadway with the access in, so they'd have two access points? Does that still not make sense?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
So are you saying that they construct the road that connects the entrance on the highway and on Harris, all the way through, prior to any construction of any of the lots? I'm not sure that works from an infrastructure standpoint.
I was just offering as a suggestion, if they really wanted that second access point, and that was part of their, they were worried about the timing of it.
Okay. And question, another question for you. When you're talking about improving Harris first, I get what you're saying about all the rest of the, of the traffic coming through there, and that being a safer way to do it. Are you also suggesting that that signal go in, in Phase One?
I'm open to my Commissioners' thoughts on that.
Because I don't, I'm not seeing how it will really improve safety unless that signal's there. But, so help me understand that, if you see how it would improve safety.
I think that it's, I think that putting in a neighborhood right next to a busy highway, and you're going to have people coming in and out of it warrants a stoplight. I say that, knowing that we want the least amount of stoplights possible there. That said, it makes the safety concerns that I had basically start to go away at that point, or go away, and it makes the access that's provided for directly from the state highway basically more amenable to the subdivision itself, you know, right-in, right-in, right-out, left-in, as was recommended, because the stoplight's there to provide access that is going to provide safe access, plus speedier access, which that's what everybody wants. I mean, you know, a lot of people, unfortunately, are going to be willing to forego safety to whip out in traffic, you know, make a left-hand turn out of there. And I think having the stoplight in at Harris is something that's going to help get rid of that altogether. To me, it just makes everything safer. Now, I mean, as far as counting for the numbers and whether or not it's necessary, according to the numbers, I can't necessarily speak to that. I don't know, I don't know what the code is for that, but as I look at something, you know, from a common-sense, safety standpoint, again, if you're going to put all these houses right next to the highway, and they need to come in and out of the highway, a stoplight makes sense.
So we're tacking the entire light onto this development, just so we're, I mean, that's what we're asking for. It's not just a road trust, we're asking for that to be built as this neighborhood comes in. So they're footing the bill, and then having to go after everybody else for money. I'm just making sure we're all understanding that, because that's latecomers. That means they're putting it in, and having to deal with, trying to figure out how they get money out of the road trust to pay for it. So, I mean, this is, I mean, it's a decent amount of rooftops, but I'm just making sure we're all on the same page. I mean, I, so thinking through this, we're, they're, in Phase One, they're going to put the entire improvements on Meridian. So we're flipping that now, and we're not going to have an improved road. We're flipping it to Harris, and so they're going to improve there, but you're going to have a non-improved neighborhood frontage onto Meridian. So you're going to trade a little bit, some things, just so we're on the same page. Because that, what they're saying is, with Phase One, they're going to do the improvements for Phase Three and Phase One in that phase. So you're going to have an improved frontage along there, where if we flip it, it'll improve Harris, but you're going to have an interesting view on the other side. So just, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there for comment. Thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pro.
I am concerned about the signal. I don't, I'm struggling with creating undue costs to the applicant, and I think it would be beneficial for the surrounding neighborhoods to have to have a monetary commitment to that light, but I also am concerned about the safety. So I don't have a specific answer for it, and so we really have to decide what's the most important factor. Is it making sure that this development can do what they want to do right now, or the safety of the surrounding area? But as far as the phasing goes, I don't have any concern with the phasing plan, as they have proposed it myself. And maybe it's because it's getting late, and I'm not tracking with everything that you're, that you're sharing, but, but I'm not seeing any concern with how they have, I understand from a real estate standpoint, why they would want to phase it the way that they phased it, in terms of which properties get sold first, and which, and when your, when your cost is accrued in relationship to, to the common areas and stuff like that. So I get why they're trying to do what they're doing, in the order they're doing it in. I think, I just think that the biggest concern, safety-wise, is that light or not the light, versus whether the access, and Bill's saying that he thinks the light should go in Phase One, because any, that's going to create a stop for any traffic that's coming south that will, and then with that left-in, if that creates a stop, then somebody can make that left turn in that southern, in that southern entrance. So for me, the light is the biggest factor, and I'd really like to see that light go in earlier than later, but I don't have an answer for how to not create undue burden on the applicant for that.
Madam Chair, excuse me, if I may shed some light on the cost of the signal.
Please do.
ACHD's report, Site-Specific Condition of Approval, Number One, I'll just read it to you. It says, "If and when ITD requires the applicant to install a signal, the applicant will need to obtain plan approval and a permit from ITD for installation of the signal, and enter into a signal agreement with ACHD. Although the applicant may be fronting the cost of the signal, the signal agreement will allocate the proportional share of the signal installation, with the applicant ultimately contributing twenty-five percent of the cost, with another percent coming from the approved subdivisions to the west, Brundage and Graycliff, and the final fifty percent coming from development located on the east side of State Highway 69. The signal agreement will include a reimbursement mechanism to allow the applicant to be reimbursed for a portion of the single costs as they are collected from the future developments. And then the applicant shall provide a road trust deposit to ACHD in the amount of $62,500 prior to signature of the first final plat that takes access to Harris Street."
But you're still talking about latecomers. I mean, they're, they're fronting the bill. That's the, I mean, and I have no idea when the property across the street will, I mean, so you're still talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars that they're putting up in there to improve that. I mean, I, and it's, I'm willing to talk about how we do that, and when that needs to happen, but-
Mr. Chair.
It's still about latecomers. Yes, ma'am.
My expectation would be that it would be a significant amount of time after they're done with all four of these phases, before they would get reimbursed for that cost.
Probably.
Has there been an application put in for the property to the east?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And my understanding, I think that property's owned by some plot, if I'm not mistaken. So that may not happen in our lifetime. I'm joking, but, we can't, I mean-
I mean, I would hate for that to be the thing that would hang this up, because I think all in all, it's a good, it's neat, it's needed. I think that they have thought through a lot of, a lot of the, you know, they've thought it through. And it's funny for the staff to be requesting a higher density. I know it's because of the zoning, but we don't, we're not usually coming across that, are we, where, where we're talking about a lower density in an area where we would go higher? But I think the way this is designed, and that particular area, it being midway between two arterials, is a good location if we're going to put residential on the state highway, that that would be the place that we would do it. So hopefully those thoughts were clear, but I, I mean, I don't want that light to be the hang-up, but at the same time, it's-
Mr. Chair, I, I mean, the lights definitely hang up and fronting the money for that, you know, and the comments we're making about flipping which phase to go in first and everything, I, I mean, essentially, we want, you know, I like everything about this subdivision. Again, I have, I know people that could definitely benefit from this, I mean, from, you know, from being able to have access to housing, you know, quality housing like this. That said, if, you know, to go back to, you know, it could be somebody's daughter, it could be somebody's son, it could be somebody's grandparent living in there. If one of those people dies because they're dodging out in traffic that's not safe, that's on us. So for me, the light needs to go in, and the variance, you know, can, because the light can go in conjunction with a variance. I mean, basically, you know, we've said it, if the light's there, that creates a stop. People can then safely come in and out of that, simply because the light's there.
So are you, just real quick, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you thinking you keep the same phasing and then require the light?
I don't know that you can keep the same phasing, because, I mean, Phase One doesn't have access to the road to the north. doesn't have access to the, the road to the north.
You're causing a stop, is what, my understanding, was what you said. I was, I'm just trying to understand what your logic is, or so I can get there.
Right. So, I mean, if, if, if you keep the phasing, if you only, if you go Phase One first, they don't have access to the road that would have the light on it.
Got it, yeah.
So that's, you know, why I, I think requesting that they do Phase Two first, and the light is going to make, you know, from a safety standpoint, that makes this work, in my mind. You know, and again, this is, this is something that's very real. I mean, we all drive these roads around here, and, I mean, I can tell you from experience, there's been a lot of times when people are diving in and out of traffic, either on, I mean, look at the way that Eagle Road is, is shaped up now, when they have safety berms all the way down it, just to prevent people from doing that very thing. You know, Chindon Road has a lot of different access points right now where people are diving in and out. I mean, anything that we can do to help mitigate that, from a safety standpoint, I think, is a good thing. Does it put under undue, you know, burden of cost on them? I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the cost of safety is, and the fact of the matter is that they will reclaim the money at a date to be determined. But that's nothing that we have control over.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
You know, my, my suggestion would, to change the phasing was not something that I'm set on by any means. I, I understand why they laid it out in the phasing that they did, too. My only concern is the same, same thing we've been talking about, is the safety, and just letting people be able to access it easily. Sometimes that road, coming from people from Kuna, backs up all the way to Lake Hazel on busy mornings. And so even if, I mean, unless there's preventive barriers from making them, not letting them turn left there, people will still probably turn left and then merge into those lanes. So that's my concern, and that's why I think a stoplight would be warranted for that neighborhood, to try and help ease some of those safety concerns. My suggestion of carrying the road through was just trying to figure out how we could connect the different phases to access points. You know, if they decided they wanted to do Phase One first, and could continue the road to connect to Harris, that might be another option as well. I wouldn't see a concern with that either.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so it says in the staff report, and, and the applicant had, I'd asked the applicant about why the change had been made from their original comment that they would be willing to put the light in, to, to the modification they're requesting. And so I would assume that with their original application, that they had counted the cost that, that it would take to put that light in, because that was originally in their proposal, when they sent their original letter in. And I would imagine that they're requesting the modification, because it is much more cost-effective for them not to have to do it until a later date, and I get that. But, but I'm sure they probably figured out the financial piece before they submitted their application. And so that being said, I wonder if they haven't already, hadn't already originally planned on having that be a cost involved, and if, whether or not, which is completely understandable, do it in the earlier phases. So for talking about the, the financial burden it may create for them, they did submit an application agreeing to that at, at the front end. So just, just throwing that out there.
Someone formulate something into a thought process, because I can't make any...
We're all over the place.
I can tell you, this won't be my first motion.
He's a Jessica, hi.
Oh, my gosh.
Just as I'm talking, I could have shared.
Okay, well, let's go back and go over the easy stuff really quick, so we can make sure we've got that down, of what we want to put in the motion. So the first request that they had was a vehicular connection to the west. Staff seemed amenable to removing that condition, and just making that emergency access point, so we could make that.
I think Sonia said vehicular connection, not local street.
Okay.
And my only comment on that, as we're going through, is I still think that's taking care of lower in the, in the property down south, but we can deal with that later.
Okay. So do we need to refer to on that? They would still be required to have a vehicular connection to the west, but we would remove the condition that they had to go through that apartment complex? Is that what we're saying?
I think we can. I think that's up to council.
Yeah, Sonia, could you rephrase what you said earlier?
The staff condition, as written, just requires a vehicular connection between, let me just pull up their, their map real quick. We keep going back to this one. A vehicular connection, and it doesn't have to be in the, in the multifamily section. I mean, it could be over here, it could be in alignment with their existing one. The reason why the flaw in, in relying on this for access down here is it doesn't accomplish the purpose of the vehicular connection here. This property, the only access it has is to the Collector Street. When this development went in, Northwest Pipeline does not like any more crossings than necessary over their big gas pipeline. Staff did not require them to provide vehicular connectivity between these two because of that reason. There is a emergency access between the two, you know, for, you know, fire access, but that's the reason that there's a vehicular connection requirement here, is...
So, per your comment, the challenge I have there is now we're, we're making the burden shift to a different developer. That's a problem. I mean, well, you're, you said you didn't require access across the pipeline because they don't like accesses, but you're now requiring it of a new developer?
No, this, Gray Cliff Estates, when it came in, there is a provision in their development agreement that requires vehicular interconnectivity with adjacent properties. That is a comprehensive plan guideline and UDC standard.
It's to connection to the surrounding properties, which you have to the south, correct? That's, the way you read it was, there was two connecting to the other properties surrounding it. That was, at least that's what Bill said, I think. So then one to the south doesn't count?
We did not require a connection over the gas pipeline, because Northwest Pipeline did not want any more accesses than already proposed with this development. So no, there would not be a vehicular connection to the west, except for the emergency access. That's why it's important to have one from, to the east. It is, it is the council's call, but, you know, staff has to make recommendations based on our comprehensive plan and our code.
Absolutely. I'll answer that one for you.
So to recap, we would need to leave that in there?
I think that's council's call.
Okay. So we wouldn't put that in our motion at this point. Okay. Item two, that their request was about the Monatness wall planes, I have no problem removing Condition One E, unless commissioners have concerns with that.
No problems.
Problem.
Mr. Chair, I have no concerns.
She's good.
Okay.
Is my mic, oh, it is on?
It's on. You're good. Thank you. Yeah.
Page fifteen, signal timing, that's what we keep going back to, so I'm going to skip that one for a second. And number four, their request was no parking signage. My, my note would just be that they would work with the fire department to find something that would be amenable on page thirty-nine, item nine.
Amenable to that as well?
Yes.
Yep. So, okay, we figured out one, two, and three, or one, two, and four. Now we just need to figure out what we want to do with number three. It's the signal timing, and if we instruct them to do certain phases first, or what needs to be done first.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
I would like to leave the staff report as stated, where it recommends that, that, did you, were you going to say something? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm hearing things. I wanted to, I would recommend that we leave it just as it's written, which, which suggests that the, the signal go in in Phase Two. I think that's already written in there that way on page, page fifteen.
Mr. Chair, would, would we want to, if we're going to leave it as is, would we want to make the recommendation that Phase Two go in first? Because, because again, if, if we, if they don't get the variance granted, then Phase One doesn't work. I mean, I'm looking at it from that standpoint as well. If you have Phase One, the variance isn't granted, they don't have the access to the street that has the, you know, the light provided, then there's no access to Phase One.
And my guess is that they don't get the access, the variance, they don't have a project.
Exactly. Right. So, so, so if the, I mean, to, to me, if they don't have the variance, which basically kind of hinges on the light, to me, they're going to have to do Phase Two first.
Well, I think the variance is not necessarily just the light, it's the connection down below, too.
Correct.
It's the south accesses.
It's the south accesses.
Right. But in, in my mind, it, it all ties together, again, for the safety component. You, you put the light in, it makes the variance more amenable, because then you're creating a stop.
Mr. Chair, it's my studying, understanding from the applicant, that if the variance is not proposed, that, that that would, it's, it's pretty much, they're pretty much not going to proceed, because then, and I don't want to speak for them, but then they, well, just the one access, access of the Harris isn't going to work, and then the, the light will be a moot point if the variance isn't granted.
Right, and...
Because they need...
I think, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Well, because this is a mixed use, so that, that, this is the residential piece of, of what's going to be a future, larger...
Right.
Development. And so if, if that variance isn't granted to give, to give access to the southerly portion, then I don't, they're going to have to all, they're going to have to modify what they're doing.
Right, and that's, that's basically what we're saying, is that I, I think that if the variance is going to be granted, that the stoplight has to go in. That's, that's as clean as a point as I can make on that.
I understand what you're saying.
Commissioner Holland.
I'm going to circle in and out of the rain again for a second here. They, they had mentioned that there's 52 units in the first phase.
Yep.
It's not a significant amount as some subdivisions that we've seen with needing access. And again, if they don't get the variance request, they're not going to be able to move forward on the project. Phase Two, I'm not sure, I don't remember how many units come in Phase Two, but with Phase Two is the requirement of the stoplight. So I might be okay seeing Phase One go forward without the stoplight, because it's only 52 units. I would hope that ITD would work with making sure that that connection point is safe, whether that means preventing left turns and making that a right in, right out only, which makes it inconvenient, but still safe.
Yeah.
I would hope that ITD would, would work with the applicant on what safety measures were required there.
When, with D cell and acceleration lanes, you have a little bit of a buffer there. So I think that would, I mean, it, to your point, it provides that area of safety so that people aren't darting into traffic. They have a merge lane, if you will.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Perrow.
I can't speak to the directions the cars are moving consistently on, but my guess is that there's probably not a lot of traffic coming from the south that's going to turn left into that development. So, I mean, probably not. It's not likely. Most of the traffic coming from the south is heading into Meridian.
I heard that Commissioner Holland's bringing 6,000 jobs to Kuna.
And they're all going to move here.
Exactly. So I'm not sure, well, I, maybe...
Congratulations.
So, no, I, I think you're correct.
So I'm not as concerned about that left-in element.
So all that to be said, thanks for the discussion. I think we, we've covered all of our bases of things that could be considered for this. If I can recap what we've talked about, number two, we would help them waive. Number four, we would ask them to work with the fire department. Number one, we would leave it as it says in the staff, staff report. Number three, we would leave it as it says in the staff report.
That would be, that would be okay with me.
Any other discussion, or someone want to attempt to make a motion, or is that me?
It's all you.
You're doing great. All right.
You're doing a great job, yes.
After considering all staff applicant, oh, wait, we need to, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Holland.
I'd move we close the public hearing for item H dash 2018 dash zero one two nine, Stapleton subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Holland.
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to city council file number H dash 2018 dash zero one two nine for Stapleton subdivision, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February 21st, 2019, with the following modifications, that on page twenty seven, or thirty-seven of the staff report, Condition One E, that condition would be struck, since the applicant is putting single family, or single level units on that side. And that the item number nine on page thirty-nine about the no parking signage, that the applicant would just work with the fire department to come up with an amenable solution for what would be, what made them feel comfortable there.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, to recommend approval to city council for file H 2018 dash zero one two nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Thank you. Sticking with us. Last motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Holland.
I move we close the public hearing for February 21st.
Can I adjourn instead?
Yes, adjourn, adjourn. Move we adjourn.
Second that motion.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn is approved.
Thank you for correcting me.